Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce. The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Welcome and thank you for attending the October 2nd Select Board meeting. A few announcements prior to our Select Board Chair is down pretty hard with pneumonia, so you're gonna have to suffer through me tonight best we can. I'm gonna remind everybody that we need to silence our cell phones. Please notify the Chair if you're making a video or audio recording of this open session meeting. The placement and operation of the recording equipment should not interfere with the conduct of the meeting. Announcements.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Huh?
Pledge of Allegiance.
Pardon?
Pledge of Allegiance.
Yeah, yeah. I'm just gonna give, before we do the pledge of allegiance, I'm, we're gonna change things up with public comment in a little bit so everybody can participate. So, at the end of our announcements after, I'm going to give you some specific instructions that we're gonna try to stay with tonight. But, let's, let's do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So we'll move on to recognitions. Any recognitions?
Didn't write anything down this week, sir.
No? Announcements.
I'll just, one, very long in the future, but on the night of December 21st, BTEO Belonging to Each Other and others will be holding the longest night sleep out. And, you know, it's a wonderful event and, you know, I urge people to think about attending.
Okay.
I'll mention a past announcement, Staff Appreciation Day, we had a couple weeks ago, it's been a while, and that was a really great event. Mr. Renshaw came up with a nice idea that staff should get together informally and have a little cookout at Goodwill Park, and it was a really nice event and well-attended and got a couple of emails of thanks for that from some staff members, so it was a good idea. I appreciate it, it was a good little afternoon.
Renshaw, any comments on how you guys put that together?
No, I just wanna thank, wanna thank the Board for supporting it. I've worked in some communities where that's not encouraged, and I think it's always important that we recognize and appreciate the staff to do such a great job for the community, so thank you all.
Good one.
Folks, good. Alright, so, we're gonna go to public, public comment, and public comment may be made on routine matters not on the agenda this evening. Comments are limited to two minutes. Please introduce yourself, since the matter has not been included on the agenda, the Select Board may not participate in the discussion. Now, I don't know how and why all of you here, some faces I don't recognize, but I just, we need to put this out, that the Select Board will not be hearing public discussion tonight on any financial or funded relating and/or zoning change related town meeting articles. So, the other thing is, the things that we're not gonna listen to, I will entertain in moderation, public comment with some items that we've received quite a few emails on, and I know that's important for people to voice, but we're gonna do that in moderation, see, has everybody had a chance to read all the emails of?
I certainly have.
So, with that being said, is there any public comment? Ms. Bissonette?
Hi, good evening. Karen Bissonette. I'm here this evening to express my displeasure with the vote you took on Emerald Properties. I reread the agenda for the September 11th meeting, and it calls for an update. It says nothing about a vote, and considering the importance of the issue, I would think you would have waited until the Select Board was fully attended. I would also like to remind those who did not vote to table this opportunity that there are another 30,000 constituents who do not live in the Davisville area, many of whom think that creation of housing on this parcel is a good idea. We are in a housing crisis, and I can think of no better time than to use town-owned land for this purpose. I have personally looked at all of the town-owned land, and there is very little suitable for creating housing. You say that affordable housing is a priority, if so, you need to take bold steps for its creation. I ask you to revisit this opportunity with the Housing Coordinator, Town Planner, and other housing advocates to come up with a plan that may be more satisfactory, and not kick this down the road because there is no one to kick it to. You are the elected leaders who need to make the difficult decisions for our entire community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bissonette. Anyone else? Madam in back?
I timed myself, so it should be under two minutes, I apologize if it's not. Hello, my name's Martina Khan, and I live in East Falmouth. I have come here today to speak about short-term rental laws and regulations for our town. As you know, tourism is the backbone of Falmouth's economy, and a lot of that tourism is supported through short-term summer rentals in their, in the homes of Falmouth residents. However, in recent years, there's been the creation of a dirty underbelly within that industry. It has been suggested to me that you may not be fully aware of the dark side of the short-term rental industry, and so I'm here today to speak about that and the current laws and regulations that govern it. I have been told by a town official that an estimated 5,000 Falmouth homes have some level of short-term rentals through the year. I would guess more than 90% of those people are following the laws, but for the 10% who do not, there's been the creation of the seedy side of the short-term rentals in Falmouth, and I feel we need stronger laws created in order to control them. For the last several years, our neighbor who has a two-bedroom house with a three-bedroom set deck has been advertising their house on websites such as Airbnb, and we needed vacation as a 14-bed rental. According to Town Law Section 172.1, they are not allowed to have more than six renters in their home, two per legal bedroom. However, week after week, there have been seven to 12 cars full of guests at their home with anywhere from 20 to 40 overnight guests. These guests are not coming to Falmouth and going to spend their money at restaurants and shops, but they show up and spend the entire week out in the yard, getting drunk and stoned all day, and never leave. They are loud, they are belligerent, and they are ruining the lives of all of us neighbors. We are no longer able to spend time in our own yards because there is a constant party going on at our next-door neighbor's house. Everyone is unhappy and stressed, and due to recent events of parties thrown this summer, which include illicit outdoor sex parties and outdoor stripper shows, we have started to feel unsafe in our own neighborhood. These renters are not here to enjoy our beautiful town of Falmouth, but are here to get their seven nights of partying in and leave behind a wake of upset and destruction. It is the Falmouth Heights on the 4th of July every single weekend and many weeknights. This is just our neighbor, but we know this situation happens throughout the town. The Falmouth rental laws were last updated in the 1970s, nearly 50 years ago. There are gates before the invention of the Internet and short-term rental websites who admit to having no regulation over their platforms. Back in the day, people used realtors to book their weekly rental, they were vetted and had very tightly worded contracts they were required to sign that held them to a respectable standard. Unfortunately, those rentals rarely happen nowadays, and while the majority of homeowners using online platforms are honorable and law-abiding, something must be done to control those who are not. There are many towns throughout the country which have created updated laws to handle short-term rentals made over the Internet. Those places include the town of Barnesville, just 20 minutes east of here. A few of the regulations they have include providing a 24/7 complaint hotline number, where the homeowner must be available between 30 to 60 minutes to deal with complaints, a limit on not only the number of guests, but also the number, oh yeah, a car is parked, and perhaps you're wondering where we can get this, but we have estimated that if 5,000 homes do 4,000 a week, that's $20 million a week, over the course of a year, that'd be $9.6 million in passive income each year. If you put 10% of that towards employed hours and positions to regulate that industry and increase the number of police officers in our town, we would be able to take control back of short-term rentals and keep our town from getting the horrible reputation these irreputable homeowners and renters are starting to give this town. I also want to thank Mr. Renshaw and the Falmouth Police Chief, Chief Lowry, for their help in understanding the laws and regulations throughout the town. Thank you for listening, and I am happy to speak with anyone.
Thank you very much.
And this is just some, like, my contact information, is that, pass it along? Thank you. Sorry, I tried to.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
Laura?
Good evening, Laura Moynihan, I'm a Falmouth resident, I'm an attorney, I've been involved in the development of affordable housing in Falmouth for over 20 years. There is a lot of work to do to address the housing crisis, the work cannot continue to be done piecemeal by other town staff with other priorities. It requires an affordable housing department with a director and a full-time assistant. The current coordinator cannot possibly address all the work done. The substantive work is very important to addressing the housing crisis. This work can involve recreating the local initiative program committee as the town had for many years, updating the LIP guidelines for development and density, this has been requested since 2019 without the work being done. So much time is wasted trying to figure it out as we go. The Emerald Property Development is an example that could have been avoided if the staff had approved guidelines to follow. Create an Affordable Housing Site Review Committee of staff for the first stop for all proposed developments. Provide a webpage on the town website for affordable housing development that contains past housing projects, guidelines for developers, and contact information. Take the Emerald Property Housing Development off the table for review for a smaller, less dense development. Some neighbors are generally always opposed to change. The goal should be to design a project that fits within the community within approved guidelines. Finalize the Housing Opportunity Purchase Program presented to the Board in May of 2022. This program has got, has not gone anywhere since the Select Board voted to have the staff work on it over a year ago. Finalize the Down Payment and Closing Cost Program presented to the Board in May 2022, again, a program that the Select Board reviewed over a year ago. Work on potential zoning bylaw changes to address affordable housing, inclusionary zoning. Draft and issue RFPs for town-owned parcels for development of affordable housing, these parcels have been identified already. The affordable housing crisis requires crisis management and leadership from the Select Board. Please consider creating this department so that we do have the staff to address the work and report frequently to you on progress. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, Tony Moynihan. Anyone else? Ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Corinne Peterson with the Buzzards Bay Coalition, and I just wanna clarify, it's my understanding you will not be discussing Article 6.
That's correct.
Okay, so I'm gonna take this opportunity to talk about it now. So we'd like to urge the Select Board to recommend an amended article, Article 6. I'm gonna begin by saying first, the Coalition and the town agree more than we disagree on the future of wastewater planning in Falmouth. We all support the design of the sewer collection system for a T-ticket. The expansion of sewer in densely developed neighborhoods is by far the most effective way to restore our coastal ponds. We support the town's pursuit of an ocean outfall that will reduce pollution town-wide. In fact, the Coalition has helped the town by collecting water samples in the Sound this summer. However, we disagree with the discharging of wastewater into Sites 14 and 15, which flowed to Crocker Pond and Herring Brook. We don't think it's needed or appropriate. The town hired a consultant to assess whether dumping more nitrogen into Herring Brook would be harmful. Unfortunately, the town's consultant didn't fully evaluate all the issues affecting Crocker Pond and Herring Brook, and their report is inadequate. A more holistic view of the area tells a different story. In 2012, the state listed Herring Brook as impaired and polluted by nitrogen. A more recent salt marsh study, including authors from USGS, Buzzards Bay National Estuaries Program, the Woodwell Climate Research Center, and the Coalition concluded that the salt marsh in Herring Brook was degraded. Of the 12 salt marshes examined across Buzzards Bay in that study, it found that Herring Brook had the second highest rate of salt marsh loss. Dr. Tobias from Avery Point at UConn, a marine science expert, concluded that adding nitrogen to Herring Brook would accelerate further degradation. And recently published in the Falmouth Enterprise was a study from the Woodwell Climate Research Center that indicated that the addition of both nitrogen and phosphorus, so nitrogen and phosphorus to freshwater ponds like Crocker Pond, is responsible for higher algae outbreaks. So the state's determined Herring Brook has too much nitrogen in it. Well-respected Falmouth-based scientists have found that the marshes been degraded. An independent science expert said additional nitrogen to Herring Brook would be bad. So based on these conclusions, we disagree with the town's consultant. But beyond what we think is very clear science, the discharge is simply not necessary. We hear a lot from the town that the permitting of an outfall is going to take too long, and the town needs a short-term solution. Surprisingly, it's likely.
Ma'am, you're gonna, you're at 2:30.
Almost done. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Surprisingly, it's likely that an ocean outfall, a discharge solution that will decrease pollution in all of Falmouth's waters, will be permitted on substantially a similar timeframe as a groundwater discharge at Sites 14 and 15. A timeframe that is so close that it doesn't really warrant the risk to Herring Brook or Crocker Pond. It's anticipate, the town's own CWMP doesn't anticipate having a permit and discharging to Sites 14 and 15 until, not before 2028. That's the same timeline that we probably can get an outfall discharged for the town and solve all of the problems. The Buzzards Bay Coalition wants to support town meeting articles that solve wastewater challenges town-wide. We supported the town in the expansion of the wastewater treatment facility in 2022 to accommodate expanded searing. We support the article that seeks to complete the science necessary to permit the outfall. We support the design of the collection system and T-ticket. And a small amendment to Article 6 before town meeting is all that's needed to put us all on the same page. I really appreciate the time.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Sir?
Matt Hanley, I'm a Director-Butter to Sites, Beds 14 and 15, used to be called Site 7. I'm here to basically give some knowledge to the Board of Selectmen, thank you for hearing this, thank you for everyone for attending today. Sewer wastewater is basically enigma. Most people don't understand it, it's boring, it's very boring. And I've been going to all the meetings with the Southern New England, EPA, Mass DEP, I've educated myself about wastewater because of the direct impact on my property. Now, I've lived in, on Thomas Landers since 1980, and I've watched the development of the waste treatment plant, and I can say that it's been a bad idea since day one. Moving nitrogen from, from East Falmouth and disposing of it in West Falmouth has never been a good idea. Now, there's other technology out there. We have our new Silver Beach, you know, sewer treatment plant, and I don't bet 90% of the town, 99% of the town doesn't know it exists. It doesn't have an impact, Buzzards Bay Coalition is satisfied with the job it does, but we're taking nitrogen from these tightly developed areas and disposing of it in the same watershed after it's being treated, not taking it from East Falmouth and pumping it to the highest point in Falmouth. The amount of energy, money, pipe that we, the money we spend on pipe and infrastructure does not make sense. So, back in the 80s when this was developed, they should have used the Spring Barbs Road property. There was an industrial complex there, it wouldn't have had impact on the neighbors because there wasn't any real direct neighbors besides across the waterway. But now, you know, we, you know, we're on Beds 14 and 15. You know why they're Beds 14 and 15? Because Beds 1 through 8 don't work. So we're using Beds 9 through 13, and we're not using Beds 14 and 15, 'cause I know, 'cause I keep a calendar in my house, when those beds are being used. The reason the town of Falmouth's not using Beds 14 and 15, because if there was a visible impact on Crocker Pond, there's no way they would get expanded effluent discharge in that area. So, I think the Buzzards Bay Coalition has written a nice amendment saying, let's not discharge, ground-based discharge anymore, let's work towards an outfall pipe to solve the solution of Falmouth's water quality. It's not, we can't go around with this piecemeal solution for our water quality issues. We can't, it's too slow. You know, Walkway Bay, you know, citizens.
So you're gonna have to wrap it up, you're at, you're at three minutes.
So, I'm just saying is, there's gonna be severe opposition to this. Buzzards Bay Coalition has already said, we're gonna oppose it, we're gonna oppose the permit. West Falmouth Village Association, they're gonna oppose the permit. North Falmouth is probably gonna oppose it too. Once the North Falmouth residents find out that Herring Brook dumps into Old Silver Beach, one of the most popular beaches in Falmouth, no one's gonna allow it. So let's, let's make the change now, let's do what's best for the town of Falmouth, move towards an outfall pipe to improve our waters.
Thank you for your comment, sir. Ma'am?
Hello, my name is Molly Moynihan, I'm a postdoctoral researcher in Woods Hole. I'm reading the statement on behalf of a colleague of mine who wanted to make a public comment but could not be here tonight, and also with the support of other scientists in Woods Hole here with me tonight. Hello, everyone, my name is Dr. Zainab Afzal, I'm originally from Lahore, Pakistan. I moved to Woods Hole last October as a postdoc at the MBL. I have met some really nice people and think there's a lot of potential to do amazing work here, but this town is the only place in my 16 years of living in the US where I struggled with finding a home. I didn't manage to find an affordable rental space, but I moved three times in one year and had anxiety about not finding a place. This past summer, I actually could not find a place, so I had to stay in emergency housing provided by the MBL. For me personally, the worst part was that I couldn't find a place where my mom could also stay with me, especially while she was not feeling well. I inquired about multiple places every day and was told either it was only for one person or realized I couldn't afford the summer price. I have now moved to North Carolina, and it has been so refreshing to easily find a place that I can call home, one that I can afford. I really hope that you can all try to understand how difficult it is to do your work when you're constantly worried about housing or not being able to have family over if you are an international person. I urge you all to please consider making affordable rental spaces for people like me, especially if you would like to retain people in the town who just want to happily work and not worry about being homeless. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Miranda Vogt, I'm a research assistant at the Marine Biological Laboratory, and I'd like to say thank you for your time. Like many young professionals moving to this area, I was warned of the housing crisis during the interview process for the job, but decided that the opportunity to work at a leading science institution doing a job I love was worth the extra effort to find a rental. It's been two years, and I still have not found a living situation that feels like home. My first year here, I was lucky enough to find an affordable bedroom in a large Falmouth house occupied by the landlords and other renters. These situations where someone rents out a room in their home are good temporary solutions, but make renters feel like guests, constantly making our presence in the house as minimal as possible. Many of my colleagues still live in situations like this to be able to afford to live here. I now live in a three-bedroom house with a total of five people living in it. It is only affordable to us because our landlords decide to rent it at a reduced rate. I drive half an hour to and from work, and our house is always full of people. I want to live in a town that I work in, I want to be able to have fewer roommates, and I want to be able to save towards retirement and be able to afford a house and a family, things previous generations were able to do in their early 30s. But even having an apartment within 30 minutes of work is next to impossible in Falmouth because of the lack of affordable year-round rental units. I am deeply disappointed that the Select Board chose to table the proposed Emerald Properties project when it would consist of exactly the kind of units that this town badly needs. You say that we need to address the housing crisis, but your inaction on actual solutions says otherwise. We work in these communities and contribute economically to the, and culturally to this town, but it feels like our voices are ignored in favor of unfounded critiques. I urge you to prioritize building affordable year-round rental units in town, which in turn will prioritize the future of the community and the people who live here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Sir?
Michael Taylor. I wanna talk about opportunities for Falmouth. I think Falmouth could use a few more opportunities, and I think there's one major factor that's not contributing enough to Falmouth, and that's addressing the housing crisis. I've literally had friends that moved away, we listened to her letter earlier. I have other friends that are renting houses for nine months out of the year and are going to have to jump into the fray once again to find a place to live, and I've heard a bunch of other stories, and I think the people that should be addressing this situation are not. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Good evening, everyone. First, best wishes to Select Chair Taylor to a speedy recovery. My name is Robert Brown, I'm a member of the Recreation Committee and the Recreation Committee Community Preservation Member. I'm here speaking for myself tonight, I can't help myself. In September 2023, I attended two Community Preservation Meetings and one Recreation Committee. I've learned the town has not done anything yet or spent any money of the $1,400,000 from town meeting-approved Community Preservation Funds to rehabilitate Little League Park. The town canned excuses, the usual, are plentiful. The history of this project is sad. The Recreation Director is in charge of the memorandum of understanding between the town and the Little League and the, and the Community Preservation Project. Reported to me clearly in June 2023, he's up to his eyeballs in pickleball, and he doesn't have any time for Little League. My fellow Recreation Committee member, Thomas Zine, was standing next to me, standing next to me. I sympathize with Joe Olenek, I do. He's bombarded by pickleball players. I'm here to beg again, beg again for a detailed account with documents to update Recreation Committee, Community Preservation, and most importantly, Little League officials, okay? How the Community Preservation, Little League project is coming along. I'd like to know who's in, we'd like, we would like to know who's in charge, what is being done, and how could unelected government better communicate with us? And will there be a season in 2024 for Little League? They had, they had eight teams for Fall Ball this year, eight teams, highest number of teams they've had in a long time for Fall Ball, which is not as, not as many kids, 'cause they're playing other sports in the fall. Little League Park is illegally accessible to less-able adults just to be a spectator, unsafe for children and adults. The 1978 baseball backstops and fencing are unrepairable, the park has been ignored by the town despite, begging please, here I am again, for help until recently. And we appreciate the help, appreciate the help from Select Board members, Zylinski, Chair Taylor, and everybody else on the Select Board. And for the DPW laborers that, that. And for the DPW laborers that, that worked on that project and, and got, and got the Little League going for this fall. Truly, truly appreciate it. It was very scary and awfully sketchy.
Mr. Brown, you're gonna have, you're gonna have to wrap this up, okay?
Okay, the town claims that they needed a million dollars to finish the League, Little League Park and rehabilitation budget for two thousand and twenty-five, which is sad. They need the mon, they're gonna need the money sooner than that. And I was shocked to learn that they budgeted two million six hundred thousand dollars for pickleball. In two thousand and twenty-three, in the proposed budget, they put in one point six million dollars for an artificial turf field. That got scratched in the, in this upcoming budget. And so, you take the one point six for the artificial turf field, the million dollars for Little League pushed off to two thousand and twenty-five. Pickleball got their two point six million dollars.
Mr. Brown, I'm gonna have to hold you there. You're at, you're at-
And I'll finish it that I, that the pickleball won the budget lottery on the backs of children, and I think that's wrong. I'm hoping that you guys will have the courage to look after the children and their recreation projects. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Fenner and the-
Mark Fenner and Grandav, and as usual of late, tonight, again, we hear more about the affordable housing crisis that we have. And there's talk. Sometimes it's just talk. I know people are making great efforts. Some of this talk is about examining all the town-owned properties and find which one is the best for affordable housing. I'd just like to point out to you again that this was done a dozen years ago by Diane Thompson, and the town spent a great deal of money on a consultant who examined all the parcels in town and determined the best and the first parcel that should be developed was the Webster Woods property on Woods Hole Road. With the addition of the sidewalk that's going to eventually go down through Woods Hole Road, I think it makes this an even more viable piece of property. I think that the Selectmen and the powers that be should pull that report out of the drawer, dust it off, and run it up the flagpole again and see if it flies because that piece of property would solve all these people's problems, or most of it. There's room there for, in the neighborhood of a hundred rental units if we desired. And that's the big word, desire. We need to do this, and we need to look at it again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fenner. Is there anything new, anything not covered? Thank you. That being said, we're gonna move on to public hearings. Ms. Scott Price.
Notice is hereby given under Chapter one forty, Section one eighty-three A of the General Laws as amended by Chapter two ninety-nine of the Acts of nineteen-twenty-six and amendments thereto that Cape Arts and Entertainment, doing business as Cape Symphony Presents, to be located at sixty High Field Drive, Falmouth, MA, has applied for an annual entertainment license. A hearing on the above application will be held in the Select Board Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, on Monday, October second, two thousand and twenty-three, at six thirty-five P.M. Comments may be sent to selectboard@falmouthma.gov. Per order of Select Board, publication date Friday, September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, Falmouth Enterprise.
Thank you, Ms. Scott Price.
Welcome.
The applicant.
Mr. Chair, I have a couple of comments just to lead us off. Just as an overview, and this is all part of your package this evening, Select Board, the applicant, Cape Symphony Presents, is requesting an entertainment license associated with a slate of music dance events to be held at sixty High Field Drive, Cape Conservancy, on the sixteenth and twentieth of September, October twenty-eighth, November eighteenth, December fifth, and December fifteenth. I wanted to, to note to the Select Board that I talked to front office staff. The original application was submitted on September fourteenth. It was in disarray. I understand that perhaps someone new to the organization was in charge of putting it together, so there's some issues with it. So, they had to redo the initial application. The hours of the proposed entertainment are from six thirty to nine thirty P.M. The applicant anticipates about a hundred people per event. And Select Board, the Fire Department has reviewed the application and submitted plans and has no objections. And I don't know if the applicant is here. Okay.
Would you like to speak on it?
I haven't answered any questions you may have.
Are the board like to, do you have any questions?
I don't think so.
No, I thought it looked fine.
Board have everything they need to make a decision on it?
Thank you, Chairman. Select Board, it's my recommendation that the Select Board approve the entertainment license as requested.
Does that move? Is there any public comment on it? That being said, we have a motion on the table in a second.
Second.
That being said, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
It's unanimous. We're gonna move on to business now. Approved bond sale, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna ask, I don't know, is there CFO? I see Patty in the back. Okay, all right. I'm gonna let the experts introduce this. It, it, this is, I wanted to make a point at this point. This is an administrative action, but I thought, because it's been a while perhaps in Select Board, and the community has heard about this, this bond sale, that it is important to get it on the regular business agenda. So, I'm gonna ask the CFO, Finance Director, Ed Santeo, and our Treasurer, Patty O'Connell, to present the item. And also, as we're waiting for them to, to attend, time-sensitive. And at the desk this evening is a, a list of forms that we have to have Select Board sign prior to leaving tonight. Just wanted to make that announcement. And also, there's a very specific motion that is requested that was prepared by bond counsel that we're gonna ask Select Board once you've heard the presentation.
Okay, I do have that. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, you know any songs? Just playing "Kill in Five Minutes." Well, you listen. I'll take this time to recognize Mr. Forrest, the Chairman of the County Board of Commissioners. Just, we're not ready for you. I just saw you come in the room and figured I'd say hi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome, sir.
Okay, all right. So, Mr. Chairman, Select Board, I apologize, and, and members of the audience tonight. I'm gonna go ahead and run through this, and hopefully between Peter and I, we can answer any questions you may have. So, is back-
Yeah, he's here.
Okay, all right.
For the record, Mr. Santeo.
You wrapped that up quick.
Just about to get going, Ed.
Good job.
You almost got out of it.
I'm all set?
Yes.
Thank you. First of all, I wanted to congratulate the team that consisted of town management and various managers in the Finance Department for having the town's bond rating reaffirmed at a triple-A. Put togeth-
You wanna introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. Ed Santeo, Finance Director.
Thanks, sir.
The bond rating for the town was reaffirmed at a triple-A level, the best possible, citing strong management even through transition, so that was very important. Put together a package that answered all their questions a couple of days before the meeting was held, and we're able to get through that very quickly with an indication of a triple-A. And the town was able to receive that very quickly after that, that session. So, we're here today related to a bond sale that took place. And we're, we've, you know, gone through the sale for Waste Water Management at a hundred thousand dollars, tee-ticket elementary roof at two million three hundred and thirty-three thousand and two hundred and sixty-four dollars, fire station at ten million dollars, and Wild Harbor Bulkhead at seventy-four thousand dollars and forty-three, or seventy-four thousand forty-three dollars, sorry, for a total of twelve million five hundred and seven, three oh five dollars. So, twelve million five hundred and seven thousand three hundred and seven dollars. So, what we're hoping to do is have the Board vote a recommendation to actually accept the sale of the bond. We got, you know, there's tumultuous times for interest rates, but we got a great interest rate, I believe, below four, four percent during these times. So, we're hoping that we get a positive motion and vote related to accepting the bond sale.
Is there any public comment? Mr. Fenner? Ed, stick around for a second.
Mark Fenner and Grandav, I thought you mentioned tee-ticket school at the price of two and a half million. Am I incorrect in thinking that this roof was done like two years ago?
It is done, but we're still carrying the debt, so we're refinancing it.
Okay, that makes sense.
Anyone else?
Yeah, we did a short-term borrowing, and now this is a permanent borrowing for-
Thank you, Ed.
-these items. Thanks.
You're good.
Any discussion among the Board? Any questions for Mr. Santeo?
No, I think this is, actually, in today's market, three point nine four is good. So, I mean, we're doing the best we can. Just imagine, though, if we paying cash for everything, we'd save ourselves almost six million dollars here. I mean, usually, when you mortgage a house, you pay back the whole amount because the mortgage rate compounded over a longer period, but, so, I mean, really, we're doing good here. But imagine if we were paying cash for things. I don't know if we could ever get to that point, but it's a lofty goal.
I understand a motion.
I move the motion prepared by Bond Counsel entitled, quote, "Vote of the Select Board," contained in the Select Board packet. Do I need to read the actual motion?
No.
No.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous vote.
Good job on that.
Thank you.
Great work. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, if we could, we would like to be able to hand to them the signed document this evening so it can be FedExed in the morning, so if that-
Yeah, we're gonna- Town manager had, we've had it set up at the end of the meeting. We'll all stay.
I'll make sure the Finance Director gets the-
I won't leave early.
So, we'll all get it all done and checked, so it's, it's accurate for the morning.
I'd like to comment on thanks to staff for being able to put a packet together to maintain that triple-A bond rating under trying circumstances.
Thanks, Patty.
Yeah, we should have said that under recognition.
Yeah.
That being said, we're gonna move forward to the report, Shellfish Advisory Committee. That's gonna be fifteen minutes for the committee. Introduce yourselves, sir.
I am Pete Chase. I'm Chairman of the Shellfish Advisory Committee. So, I'm just gonna provide a very brief overview of what the committee's been working on this year. Our committee met monthly and focused on a variety of shellfish issues important to, to the town. The town aquaculture pilot project in Eel River East continues to be successful. All three farms are producing a lot of oysters and providing gear rental fees to the town that are used for quahog propagation. I know that Chuck Martenson was in here in July, so I won't go into too many details on the project other than to say our committee is very supportive of, of those efforts. Our committee has continued to work closely with the MES Department to determine how best to spend the propagation budget, where to place seed, determine opening and closing dates for harvest areas, and determine ratios of quahog versus oyster seed to purchase. This year, a member of our committee joined the Falmouth Shellfish Constable at meetings with shellfish departments in neighboring communities to discuss various growing methods. And as a result of that, the MES Department's gonna be initiating a quahog seed netting project this fall, and hopefully, commercial diggers will be supporting that effort as well. We worked with the town attorney to determine the necessary steps for moving forward with some changes to the commercial shellfishing regulations. We hope to put some of these changes into effect this coming year. Some of the changes are related to number of permits issued, commercial catch requirements, volunteer hours expanded, and an expanded winter fishery. We've also been pushing to get Falmouth Harbor open for shellfishing during the winter months. We've made progress on this, still waiting for final approval from Mass DMF. And we've also addressed many issues that have been brought to us by the public. And I just wanna encourage folks to reach out to us through our email account if they have any shellfish-related questions or concerns. That's all I have. So, looking forward to another productive year, and any questions?
Thank you very much, Board. Any questions?
Could you just say what that email address is for people who are watching?
Good question. Is it shellfishadvisory@falmouth.gov? If you go to our website off of the town site, Shellfish Advisory Committee, you'll find the link right to the email address.
Thank you.
Thank you. Doug?
Do you have much interaction with the commercial shellfish grower local population? Is there positive feedback between the two, from your advisory group and the commercial guys?
Yeah, I mean, we have some commercial diggers on the committee, so it's a mixed group. And, you know, it depends on the meeting, but sometimes we get, we get a number of commercial diggers in, you know, to provide input, so.
Okay.
It's been, it's been good, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Next, we'll go to Board of Library Trustees, fifteen minutes. Is Ms. Fenwick here? Gonna take that out of order. Board?
Yeah, maybe we could take that later on if she's-
All right, we'll, we'll flip-flop three and five. Let's, let's go to the- Ms. Fenwick, you're up. I guess we won't do that, Doug.
Okay.
It was a lovely night to walk, so I was hoping crossing the village green. Okay, Judy Fenwick, Chair of the Board of Library Trustees, here with my annual report. So, you have a print copy of this. I'm not going to read it, but I do wanna pick out some highlights. So, back in November of two thousand and twenty-one, at the Falmouth Forum that the Marine Biological Laboratory puts on in the winter and spring, there was a lecture given by a gentleman from Harvard, Robert Darton. He's the Harvard University Librarian, and he was talking about all the books in the world, the libraries of antiquity and of the future. And the most interesting part of that evening was the introduction that was given by Linda Collins, Library Director of the Falmouth Public Library. She had served as Head of Access Services, i.e. circulation, at Harvard's Reitner Library before coming to Falmouth. So, as he talked about thousands of years of history on libraries and forecasting what the future for libraries might hold, I was thinking, here's the Falmouth Public Library, just a speck of dust on this continuum, but then I realized that in our town, the library is a very, has a very central core position. And that is three library buildings that are open between them, a hundred and four hours a week, fifty-two weeks of the year, free of charge to all who walk in the door or access the library online. And we have, as part of our mission statement, that our mission is the goal of engaging and empowering the community through its programs, services, and collections that inform, educate, and entertain all those who enter. So, the Board of Library Trustees have their primary responsibility as the governance of the three town libraries, as stated in the Home Rule Charter and our bylaws. We have a two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-seven strategic plan along with an annual action plan that helps us set and keep our course. We meet monthly for the trustees and periodically for our committees on resources, policy, and building and grounds. And we continue to meet in person fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three with some hybrid offerings that allow trustees who are on travel or ill and community members to still attend by Zoom. There are seven library trustees, Jennifer Ali, who's the Vice Chair, Mary Fran Buckley, Catherine Elder, who's the Treasurer, myself as Chair, Lucy Helfrich, Kathy Mount, and our newest member, Camille Romano, who's the Secretary, elected in May. Lindsay Hopewood retired from the Board after serving four terms. There's no term limits when you're an elected official in this town, so we appreciate her serving for so long. The library lawn use is a very popular place in town to hold events by organizations or by the library. And if you are an organization- And if you are an organization that wants to use the library lawn, you have to come to the trustees for approval. We went from 38 requests in fiscal year 22 to seven in 23 because more programs moved back indoors. This doesn't include the Friends Five-Day Library Sale in the summer or the numerous programs that are offered by library staff on the lawn. And I want to just point out a couple of the events that took place during fiscal year 23 on the lawn. Rotary Club Day of Play, the Falmouth Village Association Summer Movies Under the Stars, Falmouth Classic Car Club, the Brian Baru Pipe Band, which rehearses on the lawn, the Master Gardeners, and two programs at North Falmouth Branch, the North Falmouth Village Unplugged and the Paul White Memorial Road Race. So other than giving requests out for library lawn use, we take actions at our meetings that are helped by support from the Trustees Fund, which has an annual budget, and this is not the town's operating budget. So out of the Trustees Fund in fiscal year 23, we funded staff professional development for conferences and workshops and some for staff recruitment. We funded preservation of some of the library's special collections. We funded adult and young adult programs. We have some stats, thanks to the Assistant Director. Adult programs in this year were 241 programs onsite with about 4,700 attendees and 18 virtual programs with 412 attendees. We also funded young adult programs, 14 onsite with 144 attendees. And we had no virtual for the young adults. We also funded annually, we do this, book awards for Falmouth High School juniors at Awards Night. We gave out nine this past year. We funded two staff appreciation events. We believe it's important to invest in our staff and appreciate them. Our funds also covered dues with the Mass Library Trustees Association, insurance bonding fees for the Treasurer, office expenses, and the Sunshine Fund. So that's, that's what we've been spending our money on. The staff of the Falmouth Public Library gets a special call out, as far as I'm concerned. During the height of the pandemic, the library staff found opportunities for transforming systems and processes so that we were as open as we could possibly be, even if it was curbside pickup. We increased partnerships and we expanded digital access and outreach. This was the new normal, and it has stayed with us because the staff has made it so. Much of that expanded engagement and reaching out continued, as I said. In fiscal year 23, the library IT Department head and the Assistant Director worked to increase the library's bandwidth to broaden digital access. And for you geeks out there, we went from 50 MPBS to 1,000. So it meant that a lot more people were going to be able to stream and take advantage of the wireless, not just in the building, but out on those picnic tables that the town provided on the library lawn. The trustees recognize more than ever before that pulling people into our libraries no longer means having them walk through the doors. It means having them join us digitally and having our services and materials reach them where they live, work, play, and learn. We have two groups that support the library, and without them, we wouldn't be providing many of the services that we do. We have the Friends of the Falmouth Public Library. It's a 501(c)(1) nonprofit, and it's under the leadership this year of President Edwina Yee, and many volunteers who put on the annual summer book sale held in July. There were tens of thousands of books, along with games, puzzles, and DVDs. I heard something to the effect of 40,000 books were put out, and all of them found good homes. The annual holiday book sale held in December. And the group honors the library's annual wish list that the staff puts up to the tune of $30,000 to $40,000 a year. Museum passes, programs, digital and special collections, and joy of learning classes. And this money they get, they earn through these two book sales. This past year, it was $60,000 that was raised. The trustees are grateful for the Friends for their continuing support. We also have a fairly new group. It's only been around about 10 years, and that's the Falmouth Public Library Support Fund, this year under the leadership of Bob Ripley. This group has contributed funding for several library programs and equipment. Proposals from the library staff are submitted to this program committee, which is voted on by the entire Support Fund Directors based on recommendations from the program committee. Among the Support Fund's 11-member board, two trustees serve as voting directors, Lucy Helfrich and myself. And I also serve on the program committee, but as a non-voting member. The Support Fund continues with its vision to provide funding for literacy and education programs and projects that enhance the library, as well as its mission to provide supplemental funding to the library with emphasis on capital improvements. Now, one piece of information that's sneaking under the wire because it didn't take place in fiscal year 23 is that Linda Collins has retired as Library Director effective July 7. After 11 years at the library, I couldn't let this information wait until the 2024 report. We wish her well in her retirement, and I know we'll see her checking out books at the circulation desk and being out about in the community. And I want to find out if Angie is still our liaison for the library. You're holding on to us? Okay, good. Thank you.
You're stuck with me for now.
Okay. Any questions?
I would just comment, I am really surprised that the book sale raised $60,000.
And that was low.
Really?
Yes. Pre-COVID, there was a year where it was $80,000.
Really?
So, yeah. They were a little low on contributions, so we're just getting back to taking more in, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
I would have never guessed that. That's amazing.
Anything else?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're going to move on. Update on the Plastic Reduction Advisory Committee. Roth, you slated for 15 minutes. How are you?
Well, how are you?
Excellent.
Good. I think there's some slides. We can make magic happen and things turn on.
Slide magic.
I know the AC magic isn't happening.
It's fine.
Just for you.
Get anything you want for a few more months.
That's exactly right.
Mine is so much better looking than that. Okay, awesome. Thank you. All right. Oh, Jesus, Peter. Making it all work.
It's good to be chair for five minutes.
Hi, everybody. Amy Roth, the Chair of the Plastics Reduction Committee. Thankful to have a bunch of our committee here tonight. Steve, Lynn, Stephanie, Christine are here. Thank you to the Select Board for appointing this committee. It's really actually been a pleasure to get to know and work with all of the members. We were pulled together in July and August. You guys appointed us to the committee. We've been able to meet twice a month in July, or in August, September, and October since then. So even though it seems like a lot of time has passed, it's only six meetings. And because of everyone's schedules and some military service, we've actually only had the whole committee together one time out of all of those six. It's just a busy time of year. So it's definitely, it's a challenging task, and it's been challenging with schedules. But everyone on the committee has been willing to jump in, research, make calls, bring information to the table from their respective experience, listen to each other. So it's really been a good and meaningful set of sessions that we've had. And just taking a look to remind everyone, believe it or not, this is not even our entire mission. I kind of shortened it up or eliminated part of it. But just to remind people what we are supposed to be doing, soliciting input from food establishment owners and representatives and from advocates of plastic waste reduction in developing regulations to, and this is the really important part, reduce or eliminate the use of disposable plastic containers and utensils by food establishments in Falmouth. And we're meant to consider cost implications for businesses and consumers as well as environmental impact. So the key part being in red, one of the things that needs to come into your mind right away is what is a food establishment? Every, everyone thinks easily of a restaurant, takeout place. But it also includes things like the prepared food section of your supermarket, grab-and-go foods at, you know, other, other local, smaller facilities that might not come right to mind. So when you realize that you're talking about, you know, dine-in eating, takeout eating, grab-and-go food containers, rotisserie chickens, everything, anything that is sort of prepared or packaged or repackaged onsite into a plastic container falls under the purview of a disposable or single-use plastic container used by a food establishment. So it's a really broad range of things that we're trying to regulate. And when you look at what we're trying to do, we're trying to reduce or eliminate the use of disposable plastic containers. So there's, there's two pieces to that. The first one is the disposable piece. And the best way to move, you know, in the direction we want to move as a town, is to think about the circular economy, get rid of that disposable piece, and move toward reusables. So instead of the plastic containers and, and items that you see on the left, using reusables, especially that's obviously easier in many cases for dine-in eating, gets a little more challenging when you're looking for grab-and-go or take-home containers. There are definitely ways to do it, but, and you can see one pictured in the lower right that is a stainless steel container from a company called Island Eats. They operate on the vineyard. And they have a collaborative with a number of restaurants. So if you get takeout food from those restaurants, you get it in that container. That container is then brought back to an Island Eats facility. They wash it and redistribute. So it's possible to do reusables for takeaway food. It just requires a vendor of some sort to fill that space. So it's hard to mandate a requirement or require that type of program until there's somebody to provide that type of service. So the other way to get at disposable plastic containers is to focus on the plastic part. How do we go from plastic options to non-plastic options? And this is where we spent a lot of focus and time. Everybody did a lot of research. We looked at other towns on the Cape. We looked around Massachusetts. We looked nationwide. We looked at Canada. There are a lot of people who have regulations in place to, to limit or ban a lot of different types of, of plastic. But one thing we just kept coming back to is we looked at other people's regulations in places where they're being successful with this type of program, where the regs are online and enforceable, is that they all have composting programs. So that is the, the thread that pulls through all of it, a composting infrastructure in place to support a transition from plastic to non-plastic. So when you think about Falmouth and we think about what we want to do in our town, that's one of our big challenges. We don't have municipal composting, and we don't have a Cape-wide or Cape-based industrial composting facility. So when you look at the items on the left, your mind probably goes to your big blue bin, right? A lot of those items could go in your big blue bin if, because they're recyclable, and hopefully they are going there. But if we move to those non-plastic items, all of those items you see on the right have to go in your trash right now. That's hard to swallow because we're taking, you know, we, we want to move away from plastics, but we're, our objective is not to create more trash. So we've spent a lot of time thinking about and looking at the various, various ways to go about this that make sense. And we've also thought about and talked about how this makes sense for the people who actually need to comply with the regulation. So what kind of options are there for substitutions? Some are fairly straightforward, pretty easy to put a sandwich in a cardboard box. Some are less so. Pretty hard to, you know, you can put some hot soup in a, in a cardboard or waxed paper container, but not if it needs to be shelf-stable for seven days in a grab-and-go scenario. So we've worked through a lot of different sort of complications, I guess I would say, or ways we need to think about this so that businesses can actually implement it. And one of the solutions that many, many of the communities that we looked at that have successful bans in place for disposable plastics, one of the solutions that they lean to is PLA or plant-based plastic. So there are, you've probably all been served things in, you know, something that looks like a plastic cup, but somewhere on it it says compostable, so it's probably a plant-based plastic. It's useful. It's really helpful in a lot of circumstances because it can hold hot liquids. It can remain shelf-stable for a longer period of time. But it absolutely has to be, for, to be disposed properly, it needs to be industrially composted. PLA, when it goes into a landfill or gets dumped on the side of the road accidentally, doesn't act that much different from petroleum-based plastics. Might take 1,000 years to break down. It'll break down to microplastics. It's not good when it goes into a landfill, into a landfill. But really importantly, it's really not good when it goes into your recycling bin. It looks just like your other clear plastic cup. You feel like it's recyclable, but it's not. It's a contaminant. So if it goes into your blue recycling bin, now you're contaminating your recycling stream. So we would love to sort of bring PLA into the, the mix that we're talking about. But at this point, we are not considering it an option because we don't have that composting infrastructure. We don't have a good option for that to go someplace other than the landfill.
Good luck.
We have found that it's really a challenge. A couple of our restaurant folks have called up their vendors, and a lot of the restaurants in town use the same, like, three vendors for a lot of their serveware. And they've called to see, you know, how easy is it for me to order compostable materials that are not PLA? So if I call, there's an organization called BPI that certifies compostable products. You can call your vendor and say, I want some BPI-certified compostable products that fill these needs. You know, a drink cup, a souffle cup, whatever. Nine times out of 10, they're going to lean toward a PLA as a substitute. So it's, it can be very challenging for people to call and order the supplies that they're going to need to comply with this from, from these companies. So this is, I put up kind of some of the highlights for the draft regulation that we're, we're looking at right now and we're working through language on. Always moving toward reusables whenever possible. That's the, the circular economy is our ultimate goal. But disposables when needed, we're looking at allowing compostable, like, wood, paper fiber, waxed paper, things like that for most applications. Foil and aluminum for certain, like a burrito. Hard to find another way to wrap a burrito successfully without aluminum foil. So a couple, a couple uses for that. Again, avoiding PLA, and because we're avoiding PLA, we are looking at creating sort of some specific exemptions or a list of allowed situations inside the regulation for the use of number five plastic. And we've kind of homed in on number five, polypropylene plastic, for a couple different reasons. Some other communities who have done this have focused on number five. A lot of the products that we've identified that are hard to substitute are already made with number five. So like drink lids. Drink lids are hard to substitute with a non-plastic product. Many of them are already number five plastic, so that's something that you can get. Or like a shelf-stable soup container, it's probably already number five. Number five also tends to be sometimes a little more durable.
I couldn't quite hear you. I'm sorry. What'd you say? Drink lids?
Drink lids, like the lid that goes on,
Okay.
you know, any sort of cold drink that you're going to carry out. Yeah. It's also more reusable. So like those more hardy soup containers that you might, you know, bring home. A lot of us probably reuse them, wash them out, use them again. That's usually number five plastic. So that's what we're looking at setting up. We also looked at some other real simple things to do that we can make, that we think will make a big difference. No black plastic is one of them. I think everybody's familiar with the fact that that is not recyclable because the optical scanner just doesn't see it. Any other color works. Black does not work. So we would make a clear prohibition against the use of black plastic. We're putting in language that accessories should be upon request or self-service only. So spoons, forks, knives, straws, things like that. Instead of just having them tossed into your bag with your takeout, they need to ask you if you want that silverware. So, and some of the folks on the committee have already said, we haven't thought about that before. It's so easy. And, you know, we can implement this immediately. We'll probably go through half as many utensils as we have in the past. So stirrers are another thing like that. So those would be on, on request or if they are self-service in your facility through like a dispenser. So people aren't like just grabbing a handful. You're dispensing, something like that. And then throughout this, we're recognizing that we can't possibly anticipate all of the individual scenarios that are going to need exemptions. So we're working in a waiver process so that people can come to the health agent with very specific things. If they've tried to find a substitute and they can't, they can seek a waiver to use a, a plastic product. And then the Health Department will, the Board of Health will see these regulations and ultimately pass them, and then the Health Department will enforce them. will enforce them. So that's kind of where we're headed with it. And then we get to the, our ask, which you probably can see it coming. It's, uh, to, we're asking the select board to actively support Cape-based composting, um, and not only a Cape-based composting facility, but town-based composting program, uh, so that we can actually go in the direction we want to go where these compostable materials are recovered as a resource instead of becoming a trash item. The faster we do that, the better because the, we're thinking about timeline right now with these regulations. And if you think about it, if we pass these regulations without composting in place, it's kind of a double pivot that we're asking people to do because we're asking people to move from plastic to compostables that go in the trash and then to shift their mentality again and instead of it going into the trash, now it's compost. So this, you know, if, if these things can work together, that's ideal. If they can't, we can go forward with the regulation as it is and, and, you know, work to educate people. So that's a, the third request there is a, an education program for compost and waste separation so that people begin to understand the difference between regular plastic, PLA plastics, which materials are compostable and how these all get managed correctly. Um, we feel like the town would benefit from having the solid waste and recycling coordinator position expanded to accomplish that task. Our committee is meant to be a short-term committee, um, and especially if these regulations need to evolve, which they will, um, we feel like the, someone with an actual position in town that covers this area is best suited to sort of track when changes, changes are needed. They could reconvene the committee, however that needs to work. But we're not meant to be a standing committee, so we need somebody in a more permanent position to, to be the person moving the torch forward.
Thank you, Amy.
You're welcome.
Board, any questions for Amy? Ms. Scotty?
Two, um, just to cure, uh, would, are food trucks considered food establishments for your purpose?
Yes.
They would be?
Yep.
And then secondly, if, if the composting program county or town does not go forward or what's your timeframe for issuing the regulation if that doesn't happen or be a thing?
Well, that's a good question, um, and going to be slightly challenging to answer because our committee's working through regulation language right now and I can see that we might get to resolution on that in the next couple of months. The devil's honestly in all of those little waiver areas, the types of, the specific types of exemptions you want to make for number five plastic in specific use scenarios. So we're working through that right now. But once our committee is done with those draft regulations, they go to the board of health. And then the board of health council will review, obviously the board of health will review. Then it goes through a public hearing process and that, that'll be interesting. Um, there'll be a lot of input.
So you'll, you'll be continuing with that, hoping that the composting programs come into, into existence?
I mean, right now, we're going to proceed with what we have, which is instead of allowing PLA, we're focusing on the number five plastic in those specific use scenarios. It's easier for everyone if it could just go to a compostable scenario where PLA was permitted because that, I think that covers a lot of the, the use scenarios that people would normally use plastic for and, and are going to have a hard time finding substitutes for. Um, but we need to proceed with what we have right now. We just recognize that this will be a much better program if the compostables are actually being composted.
Amy, can you reiterate where people can reach out to contact you for, to maybe to answer questions or help out?
Sure. Yeah, our, our committee meets every other Wednesday from six to eight at the Gus Canney Center. And that's, guys, first and third Wednesdays? Is that right? We're not, second, second, fourth. Okay. Um, so they're welcome to attend any of those meetings. Our agendas and meeting times are published. Can also reach, reach out to me personally. Um, my, I don't know if I-
Call you at home?
Right. No, I can, like, put in email. I don't know what's on the website, actually. I don't know if my contact-
Well, that's where I was trying to get to. Is there a place that we can, or at least verify that they can get to her?
We'll verify that. Thank you.
Yeah, they can get to me. Excellent.
Doug?
I have a question about the, the process. Heard you say that there would be potential for filing for exemptions?
Yep.
How would that work?
So they would reach out to, we'll have a, a specific process where they would need to contact the health agent, demonstrate that they had looked for reasonable substitutes, those were not available. The health agent would then, at their discretion, make an allowance for that particular single-use plastic to be used for that use scenario.
But that would be a rare occasion or do you expect that to be common? I wonder about the workload-
Expected.
For the health department.
This is a strong consideration and something we've talked about a lot because we cannot bind up the health department in endless waivers.
Right.
So the waiver process, um, will have a timeline, like, say, it has to, you have to file for your waiver within 60 days of the active date of the regulation. So, um, so we're going to try to cap it like that. Some waivers will certainly apply to more than one establishment and so we would work to communicate that quickly. The health department would work to communicate that if, you know, if, if it's recognized that a certain product, um, just really doesn't have a substitute and we know five merchants use that particular product. Um, we're not necessarily going to require everyone to go through the same exact process. But I also expect that the public meetings with the board of health will tackle a bit of that. I expect we'll have, um, quite a bit of participation from the regulated community.
Thank you, Amy. We're all set?
Nope.
Thank you very much. Um, our, our next presentation is going to kind of dovetail on our last. So, uh, Net-
Can I just make a comment?
Sure. Sorry.
Um, my name's Lynn Chad. I'm a member of the Plastics Reduction, Reduction Advisory Committee. And just on the, the topic of composting, um, there is a service in town, everybody from the group remind me, uh, called Black Earth, that does provide composting for some of the, uh, businesses that are in town. So that may be an interim service that could be pursued. Um, and the other, correct me if I'm wrong on this from our, our meeting, is that there is, um, some movement or initiative being put forward for there to be Ca- Cape-wide industrial composting. So Falmouth doesn't have to, like, necessarily reinvent it or rethink it or start it. There are some of these measures in place that we could maybe take advantage of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir?
Steve Vanerson, uh, also a member of the Plastic Advisory. Um, Black Earth currently services residentials. Um, I know of one person in, uh, West Falmouth and it's $20 a month. Um, if more people get together and use this service, the price goes down. In Beverly, it costs the townspeople a dollar sixty a month. So this is something that, with the education of this whole process, and we decide to use that sort of thing on the interim before we get to industrial composting, you know, we can see substantial savings for everybody and get this program really rocking off the ground.
Thank you very much. Sir?
Um, I didn't come here for this, um, today, but I was very, very impressed with Amy Ross's presentation. I've, uh, witnessed her-
Could you reintroduce yourself?
Yes, Matt Hanley, um, 710 Thomas Sanders Road. I've witnessed, uh, the board of health meetings, um, hosted by her. And I got to say, some of those meetings are some of the best meetings because of the openness, the, the candid banter back and forth between the board members and the way they just approach the public. Everyone feels welcome and that, that their voice is being heard by the board. And, um, I can see this committee's going to be very similar. But I, I, I work at a, a community organization in Guatemala and we're tackling a lot of the same issues. We see the impact of plastics because there's not a waste stream in developing countries. So the plastic's being burnt on the side of the road, it's being buried, or it's making its way into waterways, which eventually makes its way into the oceans and the estuaries and ponds. And, you know, we see a lot of entanglements and stuff like this. So Falmouth, taking on this program, is going to help our waters because food waste containers are eaten in parks, at the beach, and they make their way into the water, whether intentionally or unintentionally. And those, those plastic products, microplastics is one of the biggest problems worldwide. This plastic for wave motion gets broken down into micro particles that the fish are ingesting, whales are ingesting, sea life's ingesting, and that's the biggest problem. So the fact that, you know, Falmouth is, has the foresight to tackle this issue is going to be great because even if these compostable materials don't make it into a, a composting system right away, if they do make their way into our waterways or the side of the road or, you know, vacant lots or parks, they're going to break down and we're not going to have this plastic contamination that is really a threat to the environment and the world.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Moving on, uh, as I said before, we're going to, this next presentation dovetails into our last. Um, and this will be a presentation by the Solid Waste Advisory Committee on Intermation Plan for Trash Reduction and Composting.
Peter, can you help it, can you help me get started with PowerPoint?
Excuse me. Excuse me.
Oh, come on.
Yes.
You can go back and forth with those arrows.
Which way is forward?
This is forward.
Thank you. Uh, thank you. Alan Robinson, Chair of the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, and very happy to be here. And I couldn't ask for a better time to make our presentation than to follow up the presentation made by Amy and for the Plastics Reduction Committee. Uh, that was an excellent presentation and it does lead, as, as you mentioned, Scott, that it does lead into our presentation. Um, our presentation is just this, Falmouth Tonnage Reduction Through Food Waste Separation and Composting. Uh, our request as a committee for your support for, for an initial plan of action. Um, our objective for this tonight is to obtain select board's support for the Solid Waste Advisory Committee to perform tasks to facilitate Falmouth developing an information base to guide future decision-making regarding solid waste management specific to food waste reduction and composting. A few facts. Um, Falmouth curbside trash collection. In 2018, we collected over 22 million pounds of trash. In 2022, we collected over 22 million pounds of trash. Uh, Massachusetts established in 2018 a 2030 goal for trash reduction of 30%. In Falmouth, we've reduced trash in that period by, um, uh, in the last four years by point zero one percent. So essentially, there's been no change, uh, no movement towards that 30% reduction that the state has established as a goal. Food waste represents about 25 to 40% of residential curbside trash tonnage. Um, and pounds per resident works out to be for a two, a two-member family, about 20 pounds per week. For a four-member family, 40 pounds a week. It's a lot of trash. We all contribute to that in our townwide collection. Why do we need an initial action plan? Well, is try to make some, try to make some significant steps towards that 30% reduction goal the state has established. That the state as a whole is facing a disposal facility shortfall. We're very fortunate to have the relationship we have and the contract we have, uh, with the Bourne, Bourne Waste Management Facility, but over, that will last us maybe another 20 years. But overall, there's a shortfall and much of Massachusetts' waste is already going out of state. Uh, landfilling and trash-to-energy generate greenhouse gas emissions and very likely, come 2030, the state will mandate , uh, re- trash, uh, tonnage reduction. And we feel that it's important for Falmouth as really a leading community, not just on the Cape, but statewide, to take on this initiative and not wait, uh, as sometimes happens in important issues. Um, the elements of a, of this initial waste management plan, initial action plan, is one, to generate interest and participation amongst the community with backyard composting and drop-off composting at, currently at the waste management facility. To expand food waste drop-off options, it's a long way from Woods Hole or Wacoit to the waste management facility. Uh, it doesn't make sense to drive eight miles to drop off, uh, several pounds of, uh, food waste on a weekly basis. If we, if we had more locations that were closer to where our residents are, it would be a great help. And it's something we could do fairly quickly and fairly easily. Uh, investigate food waste collection options. What can we do in the future on a townwide basis? What are the options available to us? So some was already mentioned with a, a commercial company, um, is one possibility. Identify Falmouth businesses' food waste practices because while we're drilling directly on our tax base with residential food waste and town facility food waste, um, really, um, to really achieve what we need to achieve, we need to be partnering with the business community and they partnering with us in this initiative. And then identify potential upper Cape sites for regional composting facility. As mentioned, some, doing something on a county-wide basis and doing this in conjunction with Barnstable County and our neighboring towns. We've begun as a, as a committee, we have, you know, through the, you know, having the opportunity to message on a monthly basis through Talking Trash, we've, uh, able to communicate recently, uh, on food waste, food waste separation and composting. Partnering with the Falmouth Schools Administration, teachers and students, and I understand, Mike, you had a tour today-
I did.
-of the schools, including you were at Mullen Hall at lunchtime. And what you, you know, maybe in Questions and Answers, we can, you can talk about it a little bit. Um, because it's really, it's really exciting what's going on, what started in our schools. And as, you know, those of us who were around when recycling got started, what really made recycling in, where I came from in Pennsylvania, and I know here as well, is when the kids were learning about it in the schools and doing it and bringing it home and the towns caught on. And that's what started here in our schools, uh, just last month. Um, and with all of this, partnering with DPW, the health agent and the board of health and other departments on all the activities as appropriate. We are not, you know, we can't contract for the town, we can't make decisions for the town, but we can do the reconnaissance, we can do the reaching out, we can do the part, do a good deal of the partnering. So we have, uh, an authorization request that we, that you basically support us moving forward with expanding food waste drop-off, the food waste drop-off shed at the waste management facility. And that is following the completion of the new gatehouse construction, which is underway, and then the demolition of the old gatehouse. And that will hopefully be done, uh, Peter could maybe speak to that, but hopefully it'll be done by early next year. Identify and put into operation one or more additional food waste drop-off locations similar to what we have at the waste management facility. And continue discussions with Barnstable County and other communities regarding future regional composting facility. And then we have, um, funding, and we're really not asking for any town funds at this point in time because there's the opportunity to use the, the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection granted recycling dividend program funds, uh, to expand the waste management facility drop-off and to establish additional drop-off facilities. And this is actually a good time to acknowledge that the town received its 2023, uh, recycling dividends grant of 40, last week, of $49,000, which is the 16th largest grant. I think there's 283 communities that participate in this program statewide. It's the 16th largest grant in the state. And it says a lot for what the DPW and the board of health and the select board and town meeting and everyone else are doing because it's a, it's a, it's a considerable boost and some monies that we can use for, that we hope to be able to use for this purpose. And the time period of this initial action plan is just between really now and June 30th. Because on June 30th, we hope to go to the next step. And we have two programmatical requests. And we have two programmatical requests. And the first, you've heard from us before, it's a programmatical request to the Board, but it's to the administration, it's to the Finance Committee, and it will be to Town Meeting. And that is that DPW's recycling and solid waste coordinator position, which is currently a part-time, 19-hour-per-week position, be made full-time, 40 hours per week, and at a classification, a pay, a pay scale commensurate with the actual responsibilities as part of the 2025 operating budget. So that's something that needs to be, we feel, needs to be worked on really now, as you work through the budget process for physical, for the operating budget for fiscal year 2025, that will be approved in April at the Town Meeting. And then second, that a comprehensive solid waste management plan be prioritized for development beginning July 1st, 2024, at which time that part-time position becomes a full-time position, and the solid waste, recycling solid waste coordinator has the time to lead the effort to put together a comprehensive plan. It's not a plan that we, we think should take years to put together and develop, I think it'd be put together fairly quickly and, but put together well. And so we have a plan to work with to move forward, so as the Plastics Committee, you know, really so urgently recommended, that we can move forward as a, as a community in food waste separation and composting and reducing trash tonnage. So I thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Any questions?
I have a question, not so much for Mr. Robbins, Robinson, but Mr. Robinson mentioned that we expect the Bourne Solid Waste Facility to be there for 20 years, but our contract is quite a bit shorter than that, isn't it?
That's correct. Yeah, I think it's, I'm not-
It's a three-year, and we're halfway into it.
Peter McConity, Director of Public Works. Yeah, actually, our Bourne contract is up in 2024, and we can do another three-year extension to it at that time.
I was, I heard that they actually, the town of Bourne sold their capacity to another entity, and so I wonder if that might impact our ability-
I don't think that happened.
Okay. I'm just, just, my point is that there's no guarantee that we're going to have that opportunity.
That's true.
We have to renegotiate every, every once in a while.
I'd like to ask the Board a little latitude to, Commissioner Forrest came all the way from Howard's to speak to us on this matter, with Carrie Parcell, and if we could give him a few minutes to speak to us, would that be agreeable to the Board?
Certainly.
Yep.
Commissioner? Thanks for making the trip.
Thank you. It's, it's great to be here tonight. I really came here principally, first of all, Carrie Purcell, Carrie, raise your hand. Carrie is our county guru, our czar on the whole topic of solid waste management, and, and I wanted to be here, Carrie wanted to be here. We wanted to listen to your discussion tonight. This is a hot topic, not just in Falmouth, but it's a hot topic increasingly around the Cape. And we have been strategizing and talking as commissioners and at a staff level on what we can do to help support efforts that are going on here in Falmouth. I've been paying very close attention to the work of your Solid Waste Advisory Committee. The presentation tonight has been terrific, and the Plastic Reductions Committee. What you're doing here in Falmouth is sort of happening almost piecemeal in a host of other communities here on Cape Cod. In Yarmouth, there's been a lot of work and planning on dealing with food digester, an anaerobic digester, to deal with food waste. There's been talk about maybe collaborating with other towns to do some form of composting, addressing food waste, for example, here in the Upper Cape, possibly a joint-based Cape Cod. So what we're doing at the county level is ramping up our capacity, our efforts, so that we can provide more support to towns like Falmouth for the work that you're doing. This is no longer an issue that we can just sort of let play out on its own. It's a critical issue. We have a new administration, there are new initiatives in Washington, so we have a window of opportunity to take all of these individual efforts and bring them to a whole new level. So really, I came here tonight to listen, to listen to the discussion, the Q and A, but also to commend you and your, your board for providing support to these efforts, because not only are they important here in the town of Falmouth, but they're going to be incredibly important to us Cape-wide. And kudos to you for all the work that you're doing here. So that's basically it.
Anybody have any questions for Commissioner Forrest?
Just look forward to seeing if the county can help fund some of these activities. That'd be great.
Thank you, Commissioner, for making the trip. Bob?
I had the same comment as Doug, I'm interested to know if there's any grants or anything the county can help with that.
Well, we're actually doing that right now. There are some funding opportunities that we're examining. Again, our hope would be to basically, at the county level, provide added capacity and support so that we can augment what you're doing here. The more we can partner, the more we can work together, the better off we are. The town of Yarmouth, for example, was very successful in securing a major grant to deal with an anaerobic digester. I mention that because it's an example that there are funding sources in various areas to help address this challenge that we face here on Cape Cod. I think what we realize today is, is that no one's going to solve this problem for us. It's going to be solved here in Falmouth, it's going to be solved in each of the towns, but working collaboratively at the county level so that regionally, we can sort of make a, make a real, have a, have a chance at making a real dent in this problem, so-
Thank you very much.
But there is, but there is money.
Appreciate it. Alan, y'all set?
Yeah. Do you have your blessing to continue on with what we're doing?
Hold on one second. Peter?
Not so fast, Alan. Very quick.
Peter McConity, Director of Public Works. I'd like to commend Alan, the Solid Waste Advisory Group, the Plastic Reductions Committee. Prior to having our recycling coordinator, I know the time and effort that it takes them to put this type of work, and we did a lot of it through Public Works. So I do commend Alan, the Solid Waste Advisory, and that's a lot of work in the Reduction Committee. I agree 100% wholeheartedly with their regional procedure, with an upper Cape procedure, if there's something else we can do with the digester. I agree wholeheartedly with backyard composting. I agree with, there were some examples tonight of black, black earth composting. They are in town, they do have accounts in town. I am in support of bringing a recycling coordinator to 40 hours a week full-time. That would help us out at Public Works, and that would help out with the committees. The one thing I do have concerns with is expanding the operations at the compost, at the waste management facility and other side, other side areas in town. Right now, at this time, at the compost facility, it's a large operation. We have, we're changing the whole operations of that facility. We have large trucks coming in, coming out, and then we have long-haul trucks coming in, coming out. We have trucks going up picking up all the Tier Two metals, mattresses, what have you. It can become a very dangerous place during the week, Monday through Friday, and this, this, where the existing compost shed is right now, is right at the main gate, as you come into the gate. To, to increase that area, we would have to buy more equipment, more housing, an additional building to house the additional, the additional compost bins. And also, it'd be additional costs to the Department of Public Works. The, the program that we have up there right now was started in 2019, and it was a pilot program. It had two barrels, it was a pilot program. Today, it's still a pilot program. We do have people, residents that come up to that on a weekly basis, up to that area, and they do put their compost in. But as far as putting more work on through Public Works, using Public Works facilities, where we are right now in our capacity as a department, that I do, I am not in favor of, and I do have concerns about that. Everything else, I'm fully, I'm fully, I'm fully with Alan, and if we can do anything at Public Works to help that, that would be great. But I think, on a time right now, like backyard composting, black earth composting, having a company come and pick that material up, I think the best approach would be regional. But I think bringing, I think town people bringing it to a town department and leaving the town department to process it and, and push that to a compost facility, be a lot of work for Public Works.
Any questions?
I have just a follow-up comment. I'd like to pursue a facility out at the transfer facility, and collaborate with Mashpee and Sandwich to see if they have any interest to team up with an anaerobic digester, or whatever the best technology might be. So maybe we should reach out to them and mention that there might be an opportunity there. For that matter, we could reach out to Bourne, they've chosen not to participate in the transfer station, but maybe we could reignite, reignite their interest if we had a composting program.
We'll follow up on that.
Be great. Thank you.
Mr. Santio?
Yes. He wants to finance it.
It's Santio, Finance Director.
You filed some more money?
As it was indicated, the town of Yarmouth applied for a $1.5 million grant from the Department of Energy. It's at the last stages of that, and the first part of that is to work with the towns on the Cape to facilitate food waste diversion, work with the towns on the best plans to do food waste diversion, which might not be one-size-fits-all. So each town might have a different view of that. And the plan is to have an anaerobic digester at the town's septicage and solid waste regional site, which would process food waste alongside with processing bio-solids. So that's a possibility. Hopefully, we can sign off and get that grant, and then we can, the communities can all work together to try to do this on a regional basis, just to provide some input or additional info.
All right.
Nice.
Very nice.
Thank you very much for the presentation.
Good. I can just conclude that we do understand Peter's concerns, but we also, you know, we also feel, actually are seeing that there's increased interest in this in the community, in the, within the community, and we're certainly working to help develop that interest. And so, really appreciate the opportunity for us to be able to, you know, and work, working with DPW to continue to work with the county and work within our community to build up. And I think we'll probably be seeing sort of organic increase in drop-off at the waste management facility, and I'll just have to figure out how to way to make, to make it work.
The good news is that the, the open lines of communications are getting bigger and bigger. I said so. If there's nothing else, we're going to move on. Thank you, Alan, and the committee. Thank you, Commissioner. Hold on. Mr. Scherer.
I'm sitting over there and laughing. Pardon me, Dan, what's that, Dan Scherer?
Could you identify yourself for the home crew?
Yes, Dan Scherer, Fort Westfalmouth. When I was a youngster, and I'm probably one of the oldest in, in here, everybody in the town had a little bucket by the back door, usually buried in the ground with a lid you stepped on, and that's where all the solid waste went. And it was very easy, it worked. So why don't we go back and look what they did 70 years ago? It worked then. I know why we changed, because it was nice to burn it. And during the Second World War, we couldn't get the manpower to really, or do the work. So we burned it, we got it. But it was, it was easy. I'm just too old, that's all. I'm saying something now that we did very well without any incident, everybody worked on it, and it worked.
Thank you.
I remember that, too. My grandparents in East Providence, I remember throwing a banana peel in the trash, and my grandfather smacked me in the head and said, "That's garbage, that goes in the garbage pail outside, what's the matter with you?"
All right, folks, we're going to move on if everybody's done. We're going to move on for, to a request for variance to sign code. Mr. Redshaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, folks.
Back on August 22nd, Barlow Signs International, and I'm not sure if anyone from the application, let me introduce, and then if there's any questions. Back on the 22nd of August, Barlow Signs International submitted a letter requesting this variance to be granted to replace two existing freestanding signs located on the property of 137 T-Ticket Highway. The applicant proposes to replace both of these freestanding signs in their existing locations to enhance increased visibility. I had an opportunity recently to go by and take a look at the signs, and I'm sure the Select Board knows the signs very well. They are kind of buried behind and hidden behind some vegetation, and by moving these signs and increasing the square, square footage area, it's going to enhance visibility to the business. The area of the proposed replacement sign exceeds the maximum total area stated in the bylaw, which is the purpose for the variance. Proposed Sign A, there's two proposals, two signs. Sign A has an area of 80.83, of which 40 square feet is allowed, and a proposed Sign B has an area of 61 square feet, where 40 square feet is allowed. And again, Chairman, Select Board, the, the purpose behind this variance request is to enhance visibility and attract more customers to the, to the businesses. The Fire Department has had an opportunity to review and did make a comment in regards to the name of the, of the property. Currently, Falmouth Landing, I think is indicated in the application. I've been told that there's a, a road segment in Falmouth by the same name. The Fire Department's just suggesting that perhaps the name be changed to avoid confusion. And with that, Chairman and Select Board, I'd welcome the applicant to the podium. If there's any questions you have.
I did bring some visual aid, I don't know if we'll need it, but just in case.
As that's being loaded, as you all know, in your packets this evening, I think the illustrations of the signs, the current existing signs and those that are being requested to replace are in your packet.
My name is Lauren Pasquarella, and I'm here from Barlow Signs on behalf of Wilder Company. We are respectively seeking variance approval for two freestanding signs for the shopping center at 137 T-Ticket Highway. These designs were thoughtfully crafted, taking into heavy consideration the ambience and character of the town, to enhance the viewership of the tenants located within this plaza, as well as remain aesthetically cohesive with the surroundings. We believe the sign designs to be an improvement in multiple facets as to what is in their place currently. We intend to remove the signs that are existing, which include rotting wood structures, and replace them with completely new signs on new steel. The setbacks, the leading edges of the signs will remain the same as is existing. The tenant cabinets will have opaque faces with translucent copy, so that only the copy, the tenant copy, will illuminate at night and not the backgrounds. The existing and future tenants will need to adhere to the guidelines of the tenant cabinets, so that all backgrounds will match and remain the same color and will not light. There will be no company branding colors on the sign, only gray and white. These, this will create and keep consistency, which looks cleaner and better blends with the overall natural color scheme and aesthetics of the sign. This consistency among tenants does not currently exist, and therefore can, some can say has a busy appearance. Both signs will have a modern New England-style topper with flat-cutout acrylic letters to identify the shopping center. These letters will be lightly washed with external low-profile LED downlighting. And Sign A, which is up on the screen now, is a double-face sign, while Sign B is a single-face sign. So I'll go back to Sign A for a second. Sign A will include a planter around it to enhance the overall look and to help it blend with the surrounding environment. Once completed, it will also give way to changing plants and colors throughout the changing seasons, and will serve as an enhancement, not only to the sign, but to the town and community also. Sign B is a single-face sign that is situated at an angle to be seen from traffic turning onto Woburn Court from the large four-way intersection. It will have similar features to Sign A, except that it will not have a planter, and it will be smaller in scale. When looking at the actual signage portions of the signs and not all the structural and design elements, they are not significantly larger than what exists. And for note and consideration, the current signs that are there are larger than what the signed town code allows. The new signage layout for tenants will allow for copy height to fall on average between six and eight inches tall, which provides a good to excellent readability from 60 to 80 feet away, which will be perfect for viewership of motorists traveling either T-Ticket Highway or Woburn Court. In conclusion, we were incredibly mindful in our proposed- In conclusion, we were incredibly mindful in our proposed designs, so not to be an eyesore to the community, but to be an enhancement to the plaza and to the town. The design intention was to create something beautiful that also has longevity. The tasteful colors and textures will look beautiful, high-end, and cohesive with the quaint New England style for many years to come. We believe, we believe our signs are sized appropriately and tastefully for safe viewership by motorists on the road. We hope that you can see the workmanship that went into the details and can appreciate the design in, in a way that leads to an understanding of our need for variance approval. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Notice on the new sign A, there's not a place for the cinema pub to list the movies that are showing. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Just if we got an answer from the, about the Falmouth Landing, if we received an answer.
So no, we, my office has not received an answer?
Okay.
So we, we did receive that, that note from the fire department, and our client has, for the time being, decided that we could just go with 137 T-Ticket. And I'm not sure in the future if they may want to present an alternative name, but for now, they have agreed that 137 T-Ticket is completely fine with them.
I don't know if I'm mistaken, but didn't we review this a year or so ago and decline the increased sign size? Okay. So I have another question. I noticed that the building commissioner has identified this as a plaza or shopping center rather than a mall. Would the signage be allowed to be larger if it were a mall? Is that?
I believe, I, just based off my knowledge from the code, I believe a mall would allow for 100 square feet, whereas a shopping center allows for 40 square feet.
And I think that may be what leads to why we have the original sign size, because it was originally Falmouth Mall. Then they changed their way that they run it. They eliminated the middle walkway and turned it into what's basically a shopping center. So it's sort of grandfather, sort of grandfather. I don't usually allow or favor, you know, oversized signs. But I guess in this case, the actual sign is becoming a little smaller, and the address sign is a little, puts it over the top for the
Correct.
square footage.
I, what I am noticing, though, is that it's creating a lot more mass. You, with the new planter, you can't see through it to see what's coming out the other side now for vehicles. As the, as you could, the other one, you could see under the signs with the original one.
Like down here, you mean?
Yes. And once that's planted with greenery in it, I don't think that you'll see, you'll be able to see on the other side of that at all. And oncoming traffic on 28. That would be my only concern, with a lot more facial mass to it.
I have that same concern. It's just a large structure, and it will be a visibility hindrance. Also, I'm concerned about, I thought it was a mix-up between A and B, but D says the proposed location is not on their property, so.
So sign B?
No, it says sign A.
Oh.
Letter D, the concern is that it's not on your property?
Oh, I don't think that's sign A. Sign B, we did receive comment that this is on town property. The current property owner and manager is not aware of how that came to be. It's, the sign has been there for 30 years. And they said they are willing to go through any of the necessary steps to, you know, grant an easement or whatever. They're willing to work with the town with whatever they have to do to, to keep that sign where it's at.
And so on line, sign item B, if I could continue. It says the proposed location is within the setback. So this is sign B.
This is sign B, yes.
So the setback is the roadway, I guess.
Correct.
So this board does have the authority, if we so, we're so inclined to, to grant that, if it weren't a danger or a concern, we might consider that, I suppose. That probably should be done in conjunction with this approval.
To find out if there's any, any referrals that, that were, that thought that this was a bad idea with way of public safety or any of that. Did you have any pushback on that?
No.
So there's no documentation?
No, the only, the only reviews that I've been made aware of, and I can't speak to the history, thank you for that, that's, that's interesting how this development has, has transitioned over time, was the building commissioner's office and the fire department, fire rescue, took a look at the, the plans. I'm not sure if town engineer looked at it from an ingress egress and line of sight perspective or not.
Is that part of the permitting process?
It would be.
So they didn't look at it, though? There's no record of them or there was no comments?
I didn't.
You're probably going to have to come up, Peter. I'm sorry.
I did not see any comments from the engineering department. It doesn't say that it's not been done, but I have not seen any comments on it, but that would be part of their permitting process.
Mr. Mescal.
Yeah, just to be clear, though, the sign doesn't include that area, right? I mean, the, the, the application for the sign is, does not include the planting in all that area, or it does?
It does.
I believe it does.
It's all part of it, yeah. So I think, I don't, personally, I don't feel like we could approve this tonight. I think we need to look into the roadway layout issue and bring a request to the board to consider if we want to allow it in the roadway, because that's typical, it, it happens that way.
For sign A or for sign B?
Well, according to what I have here in this memo, both of them have a problem. The first one, sign A, the proposed location is not on their property. I don't know if that's accurate or not, but we should resolve that. And then the second one, sign item B, the proposed location is within the setback, which to me means the roadway, I think, right?
So here's just a general map. So this is the, this is the, the single-face sign, which is, we're calling sign B.
Yeah.
That is supposedly on town property.
Right.
This is sign A that does fall within their property line. And the, the, the leading setback, the setback to the leading edge of the sign is the exact same as what's there.
Okay.
I'm willing to we've, our client's very eager to get this project moving. So if it's a planter that is the issue, I think they're more inclined to make administrative changes to that. If there's, if it's a conditional, condition for approval, we can change the planter.
Mr. Mescal, you had something else?
Well, I'm just looking at the, at the plan and the sign that has all of the listings of the various locations is 60 square feet. And the top is 137 T-Ticket is 20.83 square feet. So the total variance is just the signs that you're asking for. Is that correct?
Correct, yes. It's just
It doesn't include the planter.
This does not include in the signage area, no.
Right. So, so the variance that you're asking for is just for the placement of the signs?
Correct.
And nothing to do with the mass, the other parts of the, of the structure, that's all.
Yes, we're strictly asking just for
And the same thing applies to sign B?
Correct. Thank you for clarifying that. Yeah, we're, we're just seeking variance for the size of the signage. And I know that this says 20.83 because I think that there was some confusion on how the code explains how to compute the square footage. Some people in our department interpreted it as just the lettering, and some interpreted it as the whole top. So just to cover all our bases, we, we included the whole topper, not just those letters. If you were to include just the letters, the square footage of technical signage would be, would be less in both cases.
Hold on. So by way of presentation, if Mr. Mescal's premise is correct, you could change everything else on that except the square footage of the signage itself.
Correct.
What we're looking at may not be what's there in the, as an end result, as described as, you know, the beautiful this and the beautiful that and all of that.
Well, I
It could come right down to, you can hang whatever we approve on whatever you want.
Well, I think that it was assumed that the overall presentation is what was being looked at as a whole. We're, we're asking for a variance in the size, definitely, but we were this town has just been an interesting experience for me, because typically, we go through like a design committee, and we go through a bunch of boards before we get to a select board or ZBA or variance hearing. But in this case, the town sort of redirected us to the select board for the overall sign.
We, we used to have a sign review committee, but
Yeah, so it's just been a little bit interesting of a process, so forgive me if I'm not
Yeah, so
super savvy on how Falmouth
And I'm familiar with the example she gave in other jurisdictions, too. What I'd feel comfortable with, and, and I should have anticipated this, the issue with regards to, number one, the location being off the property and perhaps on town property, we need to resolve that. But also the, the base and the structure that's supporting the sign, and, you know, whether that's a line of sight. Peter, did you have a comment regarding how you're, how the town engineer might weigh into this as well? I don't want to slow this down, but I, I do think there's some other issues that have kind of emerged that we need to get to the bottom of.
The application.
Yeah, so there was not, yeah.
I'm not trying to make this more confusing than it needs to be, but Route 28 is a state route. It's not town jurisdiction. So T-Ticket Highway is state. So the state, if it's over the property line, the state may want to see what's going on on that property line. The town, what the town, if it's a state route, the town engineer is going to say that it's a state route. Unless it's in, site distance, they'll look at site distance, but they'll say it's a state route. The other property, if, if the, if the sign is on town property, we should verify that, verify that. We can have a crew who will make sure that that's where that is, where that's located.
And there's a way to address that portion of it, I think, right? In regards to 30 years being perhaps on town prop, we can go back and Select Board can approve that. We just need to go through that process. I think the bigger issue now, what I'm hearing, is the potential line of sight issues coming in or going out, going out perhaps, turning onto 28 from, you know, this, again, the base is a little bit more substantial than
Yeah, that's why I would be totally willing to, and I'm, I'm pretty sure Wilder Company would be, you know, fine with making any kind of changes to the, to the planter, as long as the overall aesthetic of the, the sign portion of the sign, which is behind that planter, or inside that planter, rather, is sort of like the non-negotiable.
If we could get a better sense of what the actual height of that planter is.
I believe it is four, I think it's four feet to this part.
Yeah, that is pretty high. And I do have another question. What are the two pillars on the two sides that don't involve the sign?
Two pillars?
That's what, oh.
Oh, those are just for illustration?
Oh, that's just the side view. That's just if you're standing here looking at the side, and if you're on this side, looking at this side. It's just
What am I looking at where that two foot is indicated on that?
That would be the width of the cabinet from the side view.
Okay. So there's no signage there?
No. And I did bring site, site plans if you needed to see those. I'm not sure that
I mean, an average car door is probably less than four feet off the ground, especially some of these smaller cars like a Corvette. They won't be able to see over that at all.
We need to get to a general consensus on how we're going to move forward with this. Bob, you had something?
Just one question. So dependent upon whether the variance is granted or not, before this gets done, there's a permitting process that would still need to be going through, through the town engineer?
Or the state.
Or the state. So I mean, we could vote on the specific variance request, and then it would be up to the applicant to, right. It would be, you know, conditioned on the applicant working with the town or state to, you know, get that taken care of, as, to our satisfaction.
I would feel, I, I, great suggestion, but I would feel more comfortable, and, and we probably don't have a mechanism directly to address the, the issue with regards to the line of sight. I'd feel more comfortable rather than conditionally approving the, the sign code variance if we unfortunately, and I don't want to slow this project down. I personally and professionally think it's an improvement from what's there now.
Absolutely.
I, I, I'm going to recommend unfortunately that we table, you know, we had this on the September 11th agenda. I was requesting some additional information, so I continued it until today. I was really hoping to move this along. I underestimated the, the, the amount of questions, good questions regarding the base. So I think we need to kind of table this again. Let me circle back with staff. Whether it's a DOT issue or whether our team can review internally, again, the line of sight issues, to at least be able to address that. And then the property line issues, how we go about correcting that if in fact, I forget now which one it was, A or B. But if one of those signs is actually on town property, how we go back and correct that.
If I could just offer a little more feedback to the applicant, maybe you could talk with Wilder Company about just sliding that base back a little and lowering it a little bit?
Yeah, I think they would be completely open to that. That's why I was, I'm, I'm willing, if, if there's approval with conditions, I, I would be very open to hearing that, for sure. But whatever you feel is necessary.
You're going to get a general consensus without, and
Understood.
You know, there's a few more things that you have to do, I think, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, Chairman, Select Board, what I'd recommend, and again unfortunately, is that we table. I'm going to work as quickly as I possibly can, because again, I don't want to delay this project any further.
Thank you.
We'll work with staff. We'll develop a game plan. And we've got two more meetings in October. Hopefully, we can generate some, some ideas within the staff, working with Barlow Signs to get this done.
Okay.
Let's attain that as a motion.
Sorry about that.
Thank you.
I'd, I'd move that we follow the recommendation of the town manager on that.
Postponing this
To table it.
To table it for now, yeah. I would agree.
For a second?
Do you want to vote? A second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Tableting?
Aye.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, we're going to move on to vote article recommendations for November 2023 Annual Town Meeting. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Chairman. So first off, I want to thank Peter, Assistant Town Manager, the finance team. I've been nothing but impressed, and I've said this a lot, with the amount of work and effort and collaboration that goes into producing what we're going to talk about tonight. As you all know, there are seven articles for which the Select Board has responsibility for submitting a recommendation to the November 13th Town Meeting. And as you also know, the finance committee submits recommendations for all the financial funding-related articles. The planning board submits recommendations for those zoning-related articles. So what we're here to talk about tonight and, and get your vote on is the staff recommendations and explanations for the board's consideration of the seven articles that are identified. Within the article document itself, there's a table, and I'm specifically talking about Articles 12, Article 13, Article 16, 17, 18, 19, and 20. So those are the seven articles that we're going to be introducing and walking through with you tonight. Just as a bit of, just information purposes, the town meeting booklets are scheduled to be sent to the printer by the morning of October 17th, so we have a very tight timeline to get this done. And there will be, this allows us to get them out to town meeting members at least 10 days prior to the November 13th Town Meeting. So as such, tonight is pretty much the last opportunity for us to make that timeline, to get the recommendations included in the town meeting booklet. October 9th is, as you know, Indigenous Peoples' Day. So I'm going to walk through, and again, with Peter's assistance, and perhaps the finance directors as well, since I think he's still in the audience, we're going to walk through the articles. Unless you have any specific questions right now with regards to any articles, I'll just take it, Article 12, 13. We'll go through. What I wanted to do initially is discuss the petition articles. We have two, Articles 12 and 13. Article 12, as you know, is in regards to a petition that was submitted by Harborside Realty in regards to a, an encroachment, a sidewalk encroachment. The request is to place two curb cuts, as were illustrated in the plan submitted by Harborside Realty. There's also a, a second request within that, that the town grade and subbase the driveway, again, as shown, illustrated in the plan submitted by Harbor Side Realty. Chairman and Select Board, this petition article seeks to expend town resources on private property. As you probably know, over the past 25 years, and I think it spanned three or four town managers at least, there's been an effort to try to arrive at an agreeable solution with the property owner. Unfortunately, the last round of those, those negotiations broke down since my tenure as town manager. I cannot recommend that Select Board recommend, I cannot recommend approval in moving forward. You can see that there's not a specific recommendation listed in this, in this report tonight. But as town manager, because it is a request specifically to utilize town resources on private property, I can't recommend that. The options are to recommend to go forward to town meeting and have that discussion, town meeting floor, with a recommendation to move it or to indefinitely postpone. So with regards to this particular article, I would recommend simply that Select Board allows that debate discussion to occur on Town Meeting Floor on the 13th. Any questions on this specific article before we move on?
I would, would have wished that the applicant would have not made any mention of work on their own private property, because that's a pitfall. I agree with you on that part of it. However, the, the actual curb is on town property. I believe the encroachment is a, a part of the asphalt that's actually on, next to the lawn. So I would wish that we could support this, just to get the funding to do the repair of the curb, which I think is, I think it's our liability. I think, you know, the town, it was an error. I don't know if it was the engineer, the subcontractor, or whatever, somebody overlooked it when the sidewalk was being done. Easy to overlook because the house was in a state of incompletion. So I could see how it could happen, not knowing what the real plan was. But the gentleman doesn't really have access to his yard right now. He tried to get access from the Housing Authority on the side road. That was also deemed to be not viable by the Housing Authority. So right now, he's at a point where he doesn't really have access to his house other than to cut across the lawn in a place where he doesn't know if he's ever going to have that access because the Housing Authority could potentially put a fence or something. I just feel like we should put the money back in here. We had this discussion at Town Meeting a few years ago where the town was hoping to take the property by eminent domain to correct the problem, and it was quite a discussion. And the, I think the Town Meeting was on the verge of funding it for $25,000, and then the town moderator realized or commented that that seemed to be out of the scope of the original eminent domain article. And so that was not, even though Town Meeting seemed to send that message that they wanted it to happen. So I think Town Meeting would be supportive of this if it were just to fund the actual curbs, if the proponent was to modify the language to remove any work to be done on his own property. And I don't know, we can't adjust his article.
Okay.
I mean, I'm supportive of the concept of fixing the curbs.
And I was, thank you for those comments. I was also remiss to mention to Select Board that under my, I'd give Public Works Department direction to go out and remove the encroachment. So the sidewalk that encroaches on this gentleman's property is being removed. We're in the process of completing that project now, so.
That's our.
We're removing the encroachment. Well, we are going to take care of removing the encroachment of the existing sidewalk off his property.
And then what will happen to that area? Is just people can't use it because there's not going to be a sidewalk there anymore?
No, Peter might be able to speak more articulately than I can, but no, the sidewalk, there's going to be, we're going to remove the portion of the sidewalk that is, there's only a very small portion of the sidewalk on his property.
So the rest of, the rest will continue.
It's going to remain, yes.
And if I could just add on to that, so once the town removes the sidewalk from private property, then the homeowner will be in the same situation that all homeowners are in when they want to put in a driveway, which is they file a driveway permit, and then at their expense, they cut the sidewalk and they create their curb cut. So that's, that's where we are. There had been an attempt to negotiate a resolution where the encroachment remains, and in exchange, the town pays for the curb cuts. But those negotiations did not reach a settlement. We were not successful in reaching agreement. So, you know, if there were an agreement where the town receives something of value and provides something of value in return, that was what we were looking for, right? So the encroachment remains permanently on the private property, town pays for the two curb cuts. That, you know, that could have been a negotiation with Town Council where the town is receiving something of material value and giving something of material value in exchange.
Yeah.
But once we remove the encroachment from the private property, the homeowner's whole, there's no longer any encroachment, and then at that point, there's no basis for the town to provide something of value to a private party.
It seems like that that's a discussion to have on Town Meeting floor. It really does. I mean, there's so many people that have a version of how this went down. I think it should go to the elected body to, I mean, if we're removing, if we're removing the sidewalk that's required to remove, if the applicant or the petitioner is looking for more money for something else, that's a discussion that we don't know about yet. And I don't think we can, we can satisfy that, satisfy that here.
Well, if Town Meeting chooses to fund this request, it doesn't necessarily dictate that.
Can't that request be amended on the floor?
Yes, but what I'm saying is, say this goes to Town Meeting, we have a healthy discussion. Town Meeting decides to fund some $25,000. Town Meeting can't tell the Select Board or the Town Manager's Office what to do, so the funding will be there. Doesn't necessarily guarantee that the work will be done. Town Meeting doesn't direct work. They only fund work that's requested.
But what work would there be left to do?
Remove the curb that's blocking the man from having access to his property.
Why aren't he doing that?
So we're moving, we're moving the encroaching sidewalk. We're not, as Peter mentioned, I didn't want to get into a discussion about what could have been agreed to. Again, in the three months I've been here, I spent several weeks working with the property owner, myself, Town Council, Peter, the DPW Director, trying to arrive at that, in exchange for allowing the sidewalk to stay, what would the town be willing to provide? And there was a discussion about the curb cuts. At the 11th hour, it was introduced by the property owner that we then grade the driveway and provide all the additional, and that's when I made the decision as town manager that, because this has been going on for 25 years, that we're just simply going to move on and remove the encroachment.
So that decision was because you felt that if we moved the encroachment, we have now made the homeowner whole, and there is nothing else that the town should be responsible for doing?
He would have free, complete use of his property. I think part of the issue that the gentleman has explained over the past two and a half decades was that, you know, because of the sidewalk encroaching on his property, he did not have total use of the property. By removing that encroachment completely, the sidewalk, that small portion of the sidewalk that was encroaching, he now has full use of his property.
But he'd still need the curb cuts to do his driveway.
But now it's.
Or I'm sorry.
Yeah, but if I'm understanding, now it's his responsibility to do the curb cuts because we have removed the encroachment.
Correct. As Peter indicated, like any other property owner, he would make a request for curb cuts through the Department of Public Works, and that would be reviewed and granted. It just wouldn't be done at the town's expense.
Yet if you bought a piece of property that was surrounded by curb and sidebar, you, through the curb cut permit, those would all be addressed by the builder.
Well, I may not be accurate in this, but I thought that there was a curb cut originally for the property that recommended two curb cuts because you can't back out onto a roadway. Maybe I'm wrong. I thought that was already a permit that was already pulled years ago.
I haven't seen it.
I don't know that a permit was pulled, but a design was proposed, and the Engineering Department is in agreement that they would approve two curb cuts. So it's just a matter of who pays for it.
And so is the property owner saying, even though we're removing the curb, or excuse me, we're removing the sidewalk, that maybe because this has been going on so long that the homeowner feels we should still pay for the curb cuts?
I can't, I can't speak to the intent of the homeowner. Unfortunately, I, again, having worked with the gentleman for over a month, it's my understanding that, again, he didn't have, he felt like he didn't have complete use of his property for that two and a half decade period, and in exchange for that, he wants the town to compensate in some way. Those are my words, not his. But that's, that's what I gathered and gleaned from conversations with him. And again, you know, we, I think we negotiated in very good faith. Previous town managers to me were very close. It was always something else that had been asked for in addition to the curb cuts. And again, you can see it in the petitioner's article, the grading and adding subbase to the driveway.
Yeah, I can see how that's not possible.
And that was the request that broke the deal. That was the request that broke the deal, and I'll say it like that. I mean, we had the curb cuts as part of potential agreements. It was this interjection of grading and laying base down for the driveway that.
Well, this is an unusual situation. So what if, what if Town Meeting approves it and says they want to fund to repair what may be perceived as a mistake on the part of the town? Will we then come back and revisit it?
Wouldn't it be language? Wouldn't that be part of the amendment, the language?
Even if there is, doesn't, Town Meeting doesn't direct action by this board or the Town Manager's Office. So there's no, there's no mechanism to make it happen.
If Town Meeting amended it with, to fund it with the explicit intent to do what was described in here, then we'd have clear direction.
And I guess we would have to take it up again.
Then it would be on us again, but you got to get, you can't get there from here, and this has got to get in.
Right. Well, I'm just saying, I personally support it because I feel like it's something that we should fix, but I can't support the driveway part, so it'll be up to the petitioner to change that language.
But we can't partially support an article, so.
I know.
We have to.
So is that, I'll entertain a motion.
It's either recommend or IP.
Yeah.
So the choices are recommend or indefinite postponement?
Correct.
I would move that we indefinitely postpone this article.
Second.
I'm going to vote no, but it looks like it'll carry in.
I'm going to vote with Angelina, Bob. So it's three to one to postpone.
Recommend indefinite postponement.
Okay.
And just, I think the board is aware, but just to make it clear to perhaps to the public as well, so that the recommendation printed in the booklet will be indefinite postponement, but then when the moderator introduces the article, whether it's on the blanket vote or individually, any member of Town Meeting can make a positive motion and allow for a discussion.
Okay. With amendment?
Right.
With or without amendment? Yep.
So moving on, moving on to the second, if I may, Petition Article, Article 13, to see if the town will vote to advise the Select Board to authorize a year-end diversion pilot project in conjunction with the Massachusetts Alternative Septic Test Center, Mastec. The explanation, is it part of your packets? I wanted to point out a typographic error, Scrivener's error. We left out a word, unfortunately, within the recommendation, or the explanation paragraph, the second line from the bottom within your packets states, "Could be adopted universally within other should be watersheds where less than 100% of nitrogen from septic systems needs to be removed." So we'll go ahead and correct that error. I just wanted to point that Scrivener's error out to the board.
Anyone?
I was very supportive. I asked to have this on our agenda previously, but didn't make it. And I would like to be supportive of this. I know that there's discussion of the DEP doing it as a provisional use rather than a pilot program, and still I'd like to be supportive of the article because this is going to be something that might be useful to our town, and we need to explore it to find out whether or not it's a practical alternative for some of the areas that are not going to be sued.
I agree.
As do I.
I do as well, so.
I believe that we recommend Article 13 as printed.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Walls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. unanimous?
Moving on to Article 16, getting out of the petition article section, to see if the town will amend the town's position classification plan or take any other action on the matter. My office is requesting or seeking approval to add four positions to the town's classification plan, to change the pay classification for two existing positions. So adding four new positions and then changing the classification plan for two existing. We're in the very early stages of preparing our FY25 operating budget, as you all know. So it's yet to be determined whether there's going to be room, quite honestly, in the FY25 budget for these positions, but I want to take this opportunity with Town Meeting to seek support and add these four new positions, and then again, change the two existing, the classifications for the two existing positions. And I'll just run through these very briefly and then answer any questions. The first of the new position requested adds is Deputy Police Chief. Town Manager's Office and the Police Chief are seeking to create this Deputy Police Chief, provide a clear chain of command in the absence of the chief, and I think primarily and most importantly, to provide succession planning within the department. The second new added position being requested is for an Assistant Wastewater Manager. That's a correction. We've had some discussions internally, and the actual position title is Senior Project Manager. So we'll make that correction as well, based upon the desire of the board to move forward with that. But again, Senior Project Manager versus the Assistant Wastewater Manager. And again, due to new watershed permit regulations being promulgated most recently in July of this year, exacerbating that we are necessitating that we accelerate our attempts to address improvements to wastewater watershed management planning, we're requesting this position just basically due to workload, and we feel that Amy Lowell has done a great job, but because of these new kind of mandates from the state and DEP, it's important that we get support in that office. So I'm recommending that we have the opportunity to explore adding the Senior Project Manager position as part of the FY25 budget. Thirdly is the Coastal Resilience Coordinator. As you all know, this position will play a lead role in advancing the town's efforts to address currents and, most importantly, perhaps future impacts of sea level rise and climate change. And I know there's been some discussion in the past regarding this position. I want to bring it to Town Meeting floor in November, again, with a request to add it. Then we'll examine it, study it, and hopefully we can find room to include it in the FY25 budget. Fourthly is the addition of an Assistant Human Resources Director position. As you know, Human Resources within the town of Falmouth is responsible for the recruitment, payroll administration, employee relations, and training for over 350 full-time positions. One of the catalysts and reasons why Peter and I have begun having, had discussions with the HR Director is in regards to the recent exit of police and fire rescue from civil service. That's added a tremendous, and will continue to add, a tremendous amount of workload to the HR department. As you all know, we're fortunate to fill a vacancy, kind of a support administrative role in the office, so that now they have three folks in addition, or two people in addition to the HR Director. But I feel it's important to look at this as an opportunity to, again, become more effective and more efficient, and again, with the additional workload that's been created with getting ourselves out of civil service. I think it's going to be something that we need to look hard at trying to fund in FY25. So those are the four new positions, and again, there's a, there's a table within your packets that kind of describes the two changes to the classification. We're recommending removing the DPW mechanic at a grade nine and adding a DPW mechanic in Public Works at a grade 10. Again, we're trying to be more, become more competitive, as you all know. We're challenged in many areas with recruiting and retaining staff. Mechanics is certainly not immune to that, that issue on the Cape. So we feel this will put us in a better position. And lastly, we're recommending removal of the Fire Department Master Mechanic and replacing or adding that with a Fire Department Master Mechanic, changing from a Group 15, Grade 3, and this is actually an up, an increase or an enhancement to a Group 15, Grade 1. So as you can see, the grade three current is $32.41 entry. The grade one position is a $38.58 pay. So we're recommending, again, to become more competitive in that arena with regards to mechanics that we make that change. And again, Chairman, Select Board, this doesn't lock us in. This gives us an opportunity through the Town Meeting process in November to add those with the potential and the opportunity to look harder at and try and include those as part of the FY25 budget.
Folks?
I'm very excited about all these suggestions, and I think you're right on. The one thing I'm wondering is, will we really attract a Coastal Resilience Coordinator at this pay grade? Has that been really examined or?
You want to speak to it? Can you?
Yeah, so, you know, we look at, we try to look at external market and, you know, try to be realistic about what, what pay we need to offer in order to get the skillset that we need. We also have to keep an eye on internal pay equity and how it compares, you know, to others with similar credentials and responsibilities internally, and that's what led us to this. We, it's the same pay grade as the Sustainability Coordinator, and we were pleasantly surprised with the quality of those applicants. So I, you know, I think it's the right place to start. I'm hopeful that we can fill it, but I, you know, we can never guarantee it. We just, you know, with the housing market and the regional demographics being what they are, it's, you know, it's always going to be a challenge to fill.
I guess I'm just thinking that it's such a huge job and so much to do. I feel like we need like a superhuman person that's going to have to do this job.
Well, yeah, we don't, we're not going to get a superhuman person at this pay grade, but I think we've described a skillset that will help us advance the initiatives. There, you know, there will always be consulting support needed on the highly technical stuff. That's, you know, this person isn't going to do the studies, you know, the geological, hydrological, you know, studies. That's always going to be through consulting. So this is someone to, you know, be writing the grants, working with the contractors, leading the planning effort among the department staff and with the community.
All right.
I'll set up.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I think if it's on par with the Sustainability Coordinator, that makes sense.
I entertain a motion.
I'd move the, I'm tired.
Recommend?
Recommend as printed. Thank you.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Moving on to Article 17, again, this is seeking to, well, this is in, attempting to address some senior center, senior citizen real property tax exemptions, increasing the tax exemption from $500 to $1,000 to be effective beginning on or after July 1st of 2024. There's some qualifying parameters that have to be met to be able to qualify for that. As you all know, inflation pressures have made it increasingly challenging for low-income elderly homeowners to afford to live in town. This article, we believe, raises the tech, by raising the tax exemption amount from $500 to $1,000, eases some of that pressure and reduces some of the challenges associated. The measure along with the others proposed, that I'll discuss with you in a moment, will help to provide relief and put the town in line with some of the other communities on the Cape that have already done the same thing.
Folks?
Both are very, are very, are needed. I'm just curious if we've done an analysis of what that might actually end up costing the town in lost revenue?
That's a great question.
$67,750.
Thank you. Great question, and yeah, we actually have.
I guess if I had read it closely.
And that's $67,750 is actually spread, or includes all of the, well, the additional articles I'll be mentioning, right? It's comprehensive, including all of these changes that I'll be discussing with you. So if the select board decides to recommend moving forward with all of these exemption articles, it'll have the overall effect of $67,750.
Ladies and gentlemen?
I move approval, or I move we recommend Article 17 as printed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I'm sorry, this is a little clunky. This is my first time going through this process, walking through each one. Fortunately, we only have seven, and we're almost, we're over halfway through.
All right.
So Article 18 lowers, in effect lowers the qualifying age from 70 to 65 for the senior center real property tax exemption. Again, we feel like this will reduce some of the challenges and burdens associated with affordability and living within the town of Falmouth for our senior population. The recommendation is that the town vote Article 18 as printed, and again, this is included in your packets. This article goes along with the article that we, that the select board previously considered Article 17, and reduces the age eligibility for low-income individuals from 70 to 65. So it increases the amount of population of seniors that would be eligible for these.
But this increase was that, what was used for that projected $67,750?
Yes, yes.
Any other questions?
I'd move to recommend as printed.
Second.
We have, we have a motion and a second as printed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's another four.
So Article 19, again, with regards to, let me just make sure I get this one correct. We're seeking.
Inflation index.
Yeah, inflation index, yes. Tying to, go ahead, Peter, you might be able to do a better job explaining this one.
So this, again, we're talking about the same exemption. We're moving it from $500 to $1,000. We're reducing the eligibility age, and there's another provision in the state law that allows us to take what will now be $1,000 and, wait, no, I was about to say it wrong. We're going, it indexes the, the income qualifications will be adjusted by the CPI. So if you look at the explanation for Article 17, it outlines what the income and asset requirements are to be eligible for the tax exemption. So the personal assets cannot exceed $30,000 for a single individual, $40,000 if married, and the income for the previous year is $21,452 for an individual, $26,599 if married. Really low threshold. So those, those dollar amounts will be adjusted by CPI every year going forward.
Good job, thank you.
Anybody? Motion?
Motion. I'll move.
Ms. Scali made the motion.
I approve as printed. I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's four.
Thank you. And lastly, Article 20, to see if the town will vote to adopt the provisions of MGL 59, subsection five, clause 37A, which provides a $500 real property tax exemption to qualified blind persons, effective for exemptions granted for any fiscal year beginning on or after July 1st of '24. We're recommending moving the recommendation as printed.
Let's head a motion.
I move recommended, I move to recommend as printed.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Unanimous?
Thank you, chairman and select board. And again, I wanted to point out, I addressed a couple of the Scrivener errors earlier. Staff and I will correct those. And also included in your packets tonight, because it will be important to discuss at town meeting, are the job descriptions, which staff crafted and drafted. And again, we'll make the correction with regards to what's currently listed in your packets as the wastewater project manager. We'll, we'll transition, turn that into senior project manager, as recommended in the article, the actual article language.
Thank you, Mike. So we're going to move on from there to, to the consent agenda. Has everybody had a chance to review the consent agenda?
Yes.
Yes. My only question is, does Scott McGinn want the annual reappointment of inspector of animals?
Do you want to keep inspecting animals?
Sure.
All right, sit back down. So we're gonna, we're gonna flip it up a little bit, and we're going to vote this in aggregate, if everybody, if there's no holds.
I move the consent agenda.
Only, just a couple of typos on there, but I don't think those have any legal, instead of poll, I think the auto typed, typed in police.
Yes, I saw that, thank you.
That doesn't hinder anything. We don't need to correct that officially, right?
So, no, I don't believe we have to. It's a Scrivener's error, I don't think it has to be corrected.
Mr. Chairman, for personal reasons, I will abstain from license, matter number 1A.
So noted. So we have a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda as written with no holds and one abstention.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we have three and one abstention. All right, so we're going to go to minutes. Anybody have any issues with minutes of August 5th, 2023? Has everybody reviewed the minutes?
I have reviewed them. I didn't make a note, but if you give me a minute to look. There was one typo.
Is that a pug?
There was one little typo in here, and I'm sorry I didn't make a note of it.
You want to table it till next time?
If, if you prefer, I will. It's not really important enough. I mean, I don't think it changes the meaning, just wasn't really very clear.
Public session?
There was a public session from August 5th, 2023. Can I get a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve public session August 20, August 5th, 2023. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll move on to August 21st, 2023. Anyone take issue with any of that, or would like to table those?
I would move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve minutes of August 21st, 2023. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous? We'll move on to September 11th, 2023, be executive session.
I will abstain because I was not here.
Okay.
And just remember what the subject matter is, whether or not we want to release.
I'm gonna make a motion to table that for right now. We're one, we're one person short, and I think that's important that they get reviewed a little more thoroughly.
Good point.
So I'll make a motion to table executive session minutes of September 11th, 2023. A motion?
I would second that.
We have a motion and a second to table September 11th, 2023 executive session. Might as well one and two, right?
Yes.
Okay, we'll do that. All right. Lastly, we have July 10th, 2023, sessions one and two. Anybody have any issues?
I don't, I didn't notice any problems.
Bob?
Nope.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to accept minutes of July 10th, 2023, sessions one and two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept July 10th, 2023, sessions one and two. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very nice. We'll move on to town managers, town manager's supplemental report.
So very quickly, I want to give you all an update on an issue that was recently brought to my attention, like middle of last week. And I've asked for some additional data, but I want to address this with select board tonight in my supplemental. And my intent is to bring this back to the October 16th meeting for a fuller discussion and a vote. So we recently, last Friday, the 29th of September, lost our part-time conservation agent. Not sure how long she was with the town. By all accounts, she was doing a fantastic job. She left to pursue her completed graduate degree. So, and you have this in your packets, and I'll just kind of give, give you the synopsis. So over the past five years, we've lost four, including the most recent is part-time conservation agent. I'm concerned, and I list some data in here, 32% increase in workload over the past five years. They've seen, just comparing first quarter of FY23 to first quarter of this current FY24, they've seen a 58% increase in regulatory permit application reviews. So the workload is taking off. And my concern as town manager, and Peter and I have had this conversation with Jennifer Lincoln, our conservation administrator, is if we continue to do the same thing over and over again, and expect a different result, I'm afraid we're going to get behind. And the one thing that we can't, as you all know, get behind in, is the regulatory inspections. And Jennifer has shared with me that, you know, because of the backlog, there are some inspections that have been backlogged that they can't get to. So again, both on the side of retention and recruitment, it's, as you know, a challenge to attract a part-time, no benefit, non-benefited position in this market, this economy, that's a challenge. But also, just in terms of the sheer workload increase over the past five years, I think it's justified to take a look. And I'm waiting on some more data. Jennifer's done a great job. She tracks a lot of this, so we have solid data to report. And I'll present more of that to you on the 16th of October, and I'll ask for an approval to move forward with immediately, part of this FY24 budget, requesting a fund, a reserve fund transfer through the finance committee to fund this change. And we'll have more accurate numbers as far as the magnitude, but it's, it's less than $30,000 fully loaded with benefits.
To move from part-time to full-time with benefits.
Yes, yeah. And again, you know, and you all know this, that would be, that would get us through the remainder of FY24, but that would be an ongoing cost. But again, I think it's justified based upon the workload increase that that office has seen.
They've been requesting it for quite some time.
So, so I think we have to be strategic and look, and again, the trend, I don't think that trend in workload increase is going to, is going to reverse on us anytime soon. So I think it's going to put us in a better position. So that's my presentation on that topic. And that concludes my report, other than some additional meeting information, upcoming meetings.
I think that's a good idea because the lack of productivity on a half, a half a scale affects everybody.
And it's frustrating. It's frustrating for the, for the full-time staff, as you all know, they have to train this part-time or when they come in, and then just have to simply repeat that process.
Not to mention the applicants.
Correct.
They have to wait, so.
Yeah, and they probably were hopeful that it would turn to full-time.
Right, right.
So October 16th, our next meeting, I'll bring back some more information to you and ask for a.
Thank you, Michael. Peter, do you have anything you want to throw in, anything that may not be?
No, thank you.
Yeah. Select board reports. Mr. Scali?
Yes, I did, I attended a meeting that had been hosted by the Bike Ways and Pedestrian Committee with respect to the options for the bike trail from the terminus of the North Falmouth Trail currently to Bourne. Been a lot about this in the newspapers and advertisements and so forth. So certainly an issue that at some point in time will be coming before this board, but it was a very enlightening discussion. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Brown?
I attended the Water Quality Management Committee this week, and it was a very lively and interesting discussion about the potential for adopting the position of the Buzzes Bay Coalition with the deletion of the beds 14 and 15. But Amy Lowell very clearly and eloquently explained the fact that we can't put an application in to do sewer planning without naming the discharge location. We can't name an ocean outfall when we don't even know if it's feasible or permissible. So it's just not practical. I mean, everybody wants us to not use beds 14 and 15, but unless that's included in the package, we, we're really not going forward. So I don't think that, I mean, Corinne Peterson was sitting right there. She heard the explanation, and she came back again tonight with the same position. So maybe they're just not getting it or not listening, but it's not practical for us to think that we can just change this language and go forward, because it just puts the brakes on right away. And if, if the Buzzes Bay Coalition thinks that permitting an outfall is the same timeframe as expanding discharge to existing beds, I personally think they're mistaken, but I would not want to throw all my eggs in that basket. I would say that we need to go forward with the plan that we have and with the Buzzes Bay Coalition's support for the outfall.
Sounds a little more like an argument than a report, though. I mean.
All right, sorry. Well, and that's, that was the explanation given by Amy Lowell, and I think it was a very sound explanation.
Thank you.
Planning Board had a discussion about the rail trail again. A lot of rail trail advocates were speaking up in favor of removing the tracks. I think Mr. Livery made a very good point about his reason for wanting to keep the tracks, and so I think that's a discussion we're going to have to have again in the future on this board. Municipal Light Board had their meeting on my wedding anniversary, so my wife overruled, and I went out to dinner, so I don't know what they did. Beach Committee had a very good meeting with a discussion of coastal resilience. They would like to see us nourishing the beaches, and they had Leslie Fields offer to do the work, to write a grant for a nourishment project, which would not only do the Surf Drive Bathhouse beach area, but potentially the whole stretch, because while we were having the discussion, we just said, does it make sense to do a little piece? Maybe not. So that's going to be something that's going to come back from the Beach Committee to this board for consideration of authorizing, moving forward with the Witsole Group to do the grant application, which would be, you know, not a lot of work for us, not a heavy lift. So it's a good idea, I think, to use consultants in this role in interim time when we don't have the coastal resiliency coordinator. So I look forward to that conversation coming back up again. That's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Ojale, I know you weren't here, but do you have anything you'd like to go over?
No, dear, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I just want to reiterate my, my deep appreciation, and I was, I was a little bit at awe at the staff appreciation cookout, watching all of our town employees interact with each other and have the time, not looking at their watch, to try to get back. And I think when, when you can make cats and dogs live together in the universe and they're all right, everybody's all right. So for that, I want to thank the organizers of that and everybody that participated, all of the DPW guys that saved my butt that were on the grill, because I would have screwed everybody's lunch up. But it was good to see everybody there, and it was a great vibe. So thank you for that. And if you wouldn't mind passing that along to everybody.
It was a team effort putting that together, as you know. So I also want to say, we need to do more of those, and we'll try to do that. Also, our boards and committees, I think it's important that we try to do something. I've been told years ago, they used to do a kind of an annual, almost of a potluck. We're trying to do that.
We had a regular thing going up until COVID kicked in.
Yeah, so that needs to be brought back to, kind of appreciating and recognizing the effort of the boards and committees, so we're going to be working on that as well.
Thank you, Michael. Discussion for future agenda items, Doug, I know you had.
I forwarded a list, and Nancy's working on it, so I've got a few things in the fire.
Mr. Scali?
Nothing.
Good. Ojale?
I think I'd like to hear an update on some of the open positions, like the DEI officer position, and anything else that's open in a significant position.
Scott, just, I, I think that Nancy had mentioned before about bringing back the Little League, a report on, on Little League, and I just, you know, certainly in light of the comments.
No, absolutely, and we had worked pretty diligently when that came up the last time, and DPW threw all in to put time and effort to the point where there were members of this board that were willing to throw in and do labor work out there.[1762.51]